Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Healdsburg and Redevelopment Successor Agency. Let the record show that all council members are present. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda?
No.
Moved to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of our October 2nd, 2017, and October 16th meetings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Okay, moving on to item number two. We have a presentation from the Healthcare Foundation of Sonoma County. Welcome, Debbie. Yeah, if you just turn on the mic there.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you very much. I'm Debbie Mason. I'm the CEO of the Healthcare Foundation. And I want to point out in the audience is my Board Chair Barbara Gosecchi and our Fund Development Chair Ariel Kelly. So we're glad to be here tonight. I just want to quickly take you through a summary of a report we issued based on some feedback we heard from the community so that you can use this in your own planning as you go forward as well. So basically, I'm going to tell you a little about the listing process that we did in our response and what we heard. But first, I want to just let folks know who we are, just as clarity around that. We've been around since 2001. We are not a direct service provider, we're a funder. And so what that means is every year, we raise money and then we turn around and make grants to direct service providers. And our legacy giving area has been around health access. We started to support the local Healdsburg District Hospital when it was having operational issues, and then over the years, broadened our lens to support other healthcare organizations as well. And if you look on the left-hand part of the slide, our legacy giving area has been around proving access. So that means we've been giving technology grants to the hospital so that it could build out the emergency room, build out a CT suite, build out the only certified stroke center from San Francisco up to the Oregon border. And this year, provide a new MRI for our community, which will be operational by 2018. And we added in 2016 through some strategic planning of our board members, two new areas, and that was mental health and early childhood development. And we really based those on the quantitative data that Sonoma County does such a good job of providing us through the portrait of health in our community, but also on qualitative data in listening to residents and listening to nonprofit providers as well. And I'll take you through some of those in a moment. So we really based last year on the quantitative data said, we'd really like to understand more about how the shortage of mental health providers is showing up for nonprofit providers of every type, and is there any impact or correlation there? And how the lack of early childhood centers in our community is affecting population in our whole region. And our region is from northern Santa Rosa all the way past Cloverdale. So in serving our region, we held these mapping sessions and we moved around town to town and invited nonprofit providers that served that part of the town to come in and talk about issues they were seeing. And the number one issue that they were seeing was the severe near epidemic proportion of people showing up for services that had mental illness challenges. And those were services for after-school, or seniors' care, or other types of services that weren't related at all to mental health. And so that was a big eye-opener for us. And a second challenge around transportation, that people who needed to get to services often didn't have transportation to get where they needed to go. So we had those five sessions, and then we did community visioning sessions in all of our towns as well, where residents came out, and we asked them the same kind of questions. What kind of issues are you seeing? What kind of challenges are you seeing? And we heard the same thing, mental health, transportation, lack of access, and of course, in Healdsburg most particularly, housing. And a lot of people in our visioning and mapping sessions, whether they were nonprofits or local people, said, "I have open positions and I can't fill them because people won't move here because they can't have housing." So it's starting to affect the infrastructure of the nonprofit provider community in that we can compete by offering salaries that are certainly competitive, but when people can't come here because they can't afford to live here and they can't afford to serve here. All of a sudden, that fabric of infrastructure that supports community is really starting to erode, and we see that definitely in the medical side of things in our community. So we did, with the mapping sessions with nonprofit providers, we also asked them to try to connect and see what they had that they could share with others to create greater synergy. Maybe it's office space, or unused vans, or unused human talent, or capacity with infrastructure as well. So all of those things came together in this mapping report that you have a copy of, and we just wanted to pull out some highlights. So I told you about the mental health, but I want to pause here and stress that lack of evening and weekend hours also is a critical need in our community because the working families that are here also work shifts many times. And so they don't have childcare when they need childcare. They don't have access to medical care when they need access to medical care. If they need mental health counseling and they need a bilingual provider or a bicultural provider, they could wait six months to get that. And if you have a presenting issue, waiting six months is not a good thing. So those are all issues affecting our quality of life in our community. We also learned, in addition to transportation being an issue, that people need more access to parks and outdoor areas, and we do a great job of that here in Healdsburg. But they also need access to free and reduced-cost physical activities. So not everybody can afford to pay $5 for a Zumba class, or $10 for a Zumba class. They need things that are congregated in parks where people can come for free and get some kind of group physical activity. So that would be something I would encourage us to look at. And all of these issues affect everybody's quality of life, but certainly seniors and the working poor most. We also learned that a lot of the services that the people in our community need, they're not getting because they're based in Santa Rosa. And so they aren't coming up here to provide those services. So we're trying to encourage service providers in the county for its services to look at smaller pop-up and mobile uses of services, to bring services where people are, instead of expecting people to find transportation to get to those services. So we're trying to talk about how we shift the paradigm in serving that. In Healdsburg, and particularly in Cloverdale as well, the Hispanic populations that we listened to were talking about how immigration fears affect them. And it's not just them, it's affecting the people around them. So, for example, Alliance gave us an example of a senior citizen who relies on an undocumented person to bring him for his chemo treatments. That person was too scared to bring him to his chemo treatments. So very serious situations where people have fear. We have a growing shortage of medical providers in our community, not just physicians, although physicians are critical, but every single step, whether it's lab technicians, radiology technicians, every pathway that you look at. And that's really going to impact our ability to be a wholesome community in the future if we can't have integrity around our medical providers. We lack some really critical services. Obviously homeless is at the top of everybody's list, domestic violence, more childcare and youth services, more senior citizen support. For a lot of seniors who aren't interested in going to the wonderful senior center that we have, how are we supporting them? How are we supporting our population in aging in home? How are we supporting them in the kinds of services that need to happen for people to safely age at homes? And there are a lot of food pantry closets out there, but they're sort of not very convenient, and they're not open at hours that are most accessible to the people who need them the most on a consistent basis. So how can we create that integrated system of food access, which is going to become increasingly important in the next six months as we look at our displaced populations? So we also learned that the nonprofits themselves aren't very well-connected, and we're trying to convene nonprofits quarterly to try to create some more of that connectivity and capacity building and sharing with each other. And we also learned that nonprofits need some capacity-building grant, and our funder circle is looking at how we do that, to help people strengthen their knowledge in finance, and IT, and marketing, and development, and leadership, and board governance, and all of those topics. In Healdsburg specific, these were the things that were the call-out in both the community visioning sessions and the nonprofit mapping sessions. Transportation, access to mental health, access to higher education, and the arts. You still have to go to Santa Rosa or south for those things. In-home care for seniors, doing something constructive with the growing homeless population issue, and immigration and enforcement. So we've done a couple of things I just want to share with you, and then I have some newsletters I'll leave with you that tell you more about this. But one of the first things we did was we said, "You know what? If we were living in San Francisco, we couldn't dramatically affect the number of mental health providers, but because we live in a region with 60,000 people, we could probably do something about that." So we had a donor who stepped up to give us a grant, and we've raised some additional monies. And we're calling that project the Mental Health Talent Pipeline Project. And basically, we're taking graduates out of marriage and family therapist programs and out of nurse practitioner mental health programs, and we're bringing them here, and we're giving them a stipend during the last part of their practicum series that they need to do. And then we're connecting them with an approved nonprofit. We're giving them a sign-on bonus. We're looking at retaining them in the community, and then we're working with local mental health professionals to wrap around them, to provide some support for them, so they can get some legs in our community and put some roots down in our community to stay. Since the fires, we're also looking at what will happen after all of the temporary providers that are in our area pull out, and that mental health support is not there. So we're working with the Local Mental Health Professional Association and another small donor pool to look at how we can offer free supportive group sessions for people that are coming with trauma-related issues related to fire, and then try to get them into some other sort of supportive personal counseling situations as well. And then we've committed to a three-year grant of $50,000 a year to do some capacity building in childhood centers, to help strengthen those so that they can expand their services and hopefully serve more working families in our community through childcare. And how you can help is basically, look at how you're offering transportation as you start your planning services for the next budget year, and how, obviously, affordable housing is the chair of the CHC. We're always looking at that, and thank you for what you did tonight. And how we can have conversations with the county to bring services that our residents need here, instead of expecting our residents who don't have transportation to get there. And I have started this conversation, my board has started those conversations with our networks. We're hoping that you all, with your own networks, would start those conversations too. There are health and human services that our county does a fine job of providing if you can get there. How do we get those up here? How do we get those services where people need them? And taking a look at recreation, our Parks and Rec people do an amazing job, and I gnaw on their ears all the time, about what can we do for free? What can we do for free? What can we do for free? So people have access to healthy things in our community for free, and, you know, where can we go for grants for that? And certainly, we're a source for that, but there are others out there too, so we can help provide more activities for people for free. And just keep sharing the listening, and I want to just give recognition to staff here who did a wonderful job, and our city manager saying, "Yeah, we're going to step up and be a co-convenor for that effort." So thank you for that, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Councilwoman Yocas?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thanks for the wonderful work you do. You know, I look at the, you know, I group a lot of these topics into three categories, right? Transportation, housing, and eight to 80, I guess, maybe one way of focusing on it. But let's focus on transportation really quick, as you said, about the bring county services to the city. What, can you give any some examples of county services that we could bring up north?
Well, there are services that the county provides in the mental health department itself. There are services that the county provides in enrolling people in things that they have the right to have in terms of government support services. And if you want to get those, you really have to go there to get those. You have to go to the county to stand in line and, you know, get those things enrolled.
I guess where I'm going with is, if we can focus on transportation, then we can at least, that would solve that problem, bringing them down to the county versus trying to...
Well, I just want to also reinforce for you, we do have a bus service here, and people do use the bus service. But the workforce that needs the kind of services that we're talking about can't afford to take all day off to take a bus down and take a bus back. And that's the kind of scheduling that we often have to do because of the economy of scale of buses, and we're not going to have 50 people going back and forth five times a day. So logically, it makes sense from a governmental perspective and budgeting, but for the human beings that need those services, they're the least able to afford taking a whole day off work. Or if they need specialty medical care that isn't in our community and that's located in Santa Rosa, it's the same thing. I've got to take my kid out of school, I've got to take a day off work, or if it's my senior parent, and get on a bus, get them down there, and then wait for the bus to bring me back home. And I've lost a day's wages to do that.
That's an excellent point. Thanks for, yeah, driving that home.
Debbie, I really want to thank you for all the work you do with the Healthcare Foundation, and also chairing our Housing Committee. You're doing a great job on that note as well. And my only comment is, is I'd like to talk to you at some point about our, we have a co-op preschool that's connected to our elementary school, and it's really struggling. And there was another preschool that was on the other side of the building that was removed for many reasons. The building was really failing. And I saw that you have, you're funding early childhood capacity grants, and I think that's something that's really connected to that preschool. So maybe we can get together after and talk about that. But thank you very much for this presentation. It's very enlightening, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I just want to echo the sentiment of just how grateful I am that you're doing the work you're doing, and I certainly want to suggest that we have more connection with you. So I was wondering if you could tell us, maybe not right this minute, but you could give us some insight as to how we can stay more connected to you. We certainly have some people in our community that are connected to you, and I know we have a liaison here that attends meetings, but I'm just wanting to really stay connected because we just had a livability event Wednesday night in our city, and it's certainly in congruency with all this crisis with the fires and housing. I just want to stay in touch more because I think the county as a whole has this incredible healthcare foundation with so many community initiatives, and I'm hoping that we as a city can be more influential and also supportive, and know more about what we can do to be part of the bigger circle. So thank you so much, but do keep us in mind to checking in a little more. And I know I'm more interested in this than anything right now because I really see the future of our county in terms of health and what we're doing. And mental health has no boundaries when it comes to socioeconomics. The school I'm teaching at, one in every 10 kids lost at home at Rio Correio. So I'm dealing with kids that they have money, but they're still in complete, you know, it's a dramatic, traumatic time. So thank you for being here tonight, and come back, please, soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to council reports on matters of interest occurring since the previous meeting. Councilwoman Gold, you'd like to start off?
Yes, I have a lot, so I'll go through it very quickly. Just want to mention, some of us attended the first meeting of the Healdsburg Tourism Improvement District right after the fires, and it was very well-attended. There were at least 50 people there, and the main topic of conversation was messaging. And, you know, kind of the delicate issue of, we want to show solidarity with our less fortunate neighbors, but is it okay to point out that, you know, it's not very burned up around here? And I had to do that in a nice way. And the Director of the County Tourism Board said basically that they encourage differentiating, communities differentiating themselves from their neighbors in Sonoma County, and basically kind of, "Go ahead and differentiate ourselves anyway we see fit." So that was kind of the main takeaway for me from that meeting. So I also reached out to the chairs of the HOAs for our three retirement communities because I know that some of them have restrictions against rentals, and I just wondered if I requested that they talk to their boards about maybe temporarily lifting those restrictions in case there's any homes that are sitting empty just because they're not allowed to rent them. And it was, the conversations were very productive. The Riversbank community basically doesn't have any relevant restrictions, but the other two do, Riversview and Riverside, correct? So they do have restrictions, and in both cases, they said they would bring it up with their boards at their November meetings, and then let me know if there was, if they would go along with that. And they seemed like they really wanted to be helpful, so hopefully that'll work out. So, well, I attended a fantastic event in the plaza, the Dia de los Muertos, and it was just so much fun. And I just want to thank Corazon and all the volunteers that contributed to that because I just think it was a real gift to the community. It was really great. And finally, as I think maybe probably the rest of you also met with a group of citizens who would like to put in an application for an ESTAT. That's a Sustainable Design Assessment Team. It's a service offered by the American Institute of Architects, and they come in and kind of meet with community members and find out what they need to focus on, and they just give you some, basically, some great professional free work. So I talked to Sarah Gurney of Sebastopol and Deb Fudge of Windsor because they both went through this process, and they were both very positive about the effects, both the product that they received. I know that in Sebastopol, they found, said it was very useful for their general plan revision, and just, you know, I think it was, has been useful for both of those communities. So it made me feel quite supportive of, you know, encouraging these residents to go ahead and put an application in. So I think what they need from us at this stage is just a letter of support saying that, you know, we support them in doing this. And I would like to just see if there's support among the council for doing that.
I was, I've, I've been speaking with them as well, and I was going to ask the same question, if, as a letter of support, that I could write as the mayor on behalf of the council, and also for the city manager to do the same. So I think this is something that we, I think we might have all met with these folks, and this is something that is, you know, it's obviously not on the agenda, but if you're able to, as a mayor, as an individual, you know, I've done this before where we write a letter of support on behalf. I think that there might be also a desire to discuss this at a later date. So maybe, maybe both things can be done concurrently. Maybe we ask, and, you know, I don't really want us to get into a big discussion on this in any kind of detail because this isn't something that we have on the agenda. So I guess on this, I would just be looking for a yes or no on a letter of support from myself and the city manager, and then also a yes or no on whether we want to have this on a future agenda to discuss further.
I think agendizing a discussion would be a good idea because it may be that we want to offer some suggestions that they might include in the proposal they're writing.
Right.
Yeah, my thought is, I think it does make sense to agendize it because I haven't seen the application. I don't know that much about the ESTAT, any details, who's submitting it, who's on the committee, all, you know, a lot of these details. My understanding is the reason for the sense of urgency is this December 8th date. We have two more council meetings. I'd prefer to have it, you know, maybe you talk to the city manager, see, you know, what the staff capacity is to get something on there, but I would, you know, I'd like to see, you know, maybe a copy of this application or this letter, you know, what is it that you're being asked to sign?
Right. So I'm not being asked to sign anything. I'm just being asked to write a letter of support, and that would just be from me. So I guess my first question would be is, are you okay with me writing that letter?
But we haven't had a chance to discuss what it is you're supporting.
Well, I'm, I'm just...
So if I can jump in, I'm sorry. The attorney was getting nervous. Whenever that happens, I need to jump in. So I think what I heard is there's tentative support for a letter, but the council really wants to have a better understanding of what this is all about. So what I would propose is that maybe at the next meeting, you're not going to have really an in-depth staff report available, but we can at least allow for a lot of conversation among council members. It'll be noticed, agendized, and then at that point, you can provide direction, ask those questions. I'll be able to work with some folks who are interested in this and be able to get some information from them, with them, to present to council at that time. But I think sooner than later would be probably my preference because as the deadline approaches, we're going to want to make sure council has all the options at their fingertips, if you will. So again, I think I would agendize this for the next week, but there won't be really an in-depth staff report, it'll just be more geared towards a conversation, maybe some collateral information from the AIA with regards to the ESTAT. That's a lot of acronyms, I know, but I think that's what we would, that's what I would propose.
So the, if we were to do that, then the results of that discussion would be that letters could be potentially written by myself on behalf of the council and yourself as the city manager?
It'll be a very broad item, so yes.
Okay.
I just want information. So if we agendize it, couldn't the whole council then be on that letter?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Is that, is that okay?
Yeah.
Sounds great.
Awesome. Councilwoman Higley, or Councilwoman Gold, were you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mary.
Excuse me. Yeah, I've got, it's been a pretty busy last couple of weeks. First, I do want to acknowledge the efforts of the staff over the last, I mean, since the fires, before that, we had the sewer backing up, and then, you know, one thing after another, the Anova leads, I mean, the amount of work that our staff has done to jump through hoops to kind of keep, keep things moving as we've dealt with some of these, you know, life-changing events has been, it hasn't gone unnoticed. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. Let's see, on October 18th, I met with Bob Comstock, Bob Comstock and his representatives about the RJW side, and kind of what they were considering out there. Then on October 23rd, I met with Recology, who is looking at, maybe assuming, the Healdsburg garbage contract, and so it's more of an introduction kind of thing, listen to them. On Saturday, the 28th, I unfortunately had to miss the pumpkin races, which, but just so you know, I did win it last year with my hamburger, pumpkin that looked like a hamburger. Anyway, I attended the Day of Remembrance in Santa Rosa, and I'm a guy that tears up at, you know, lately, it's the Hallmark movies that Lori's been watching nonstop. And this event was very powerful, and I'll just say again, I received a number of compliments or from the Santa Rosa council members that came up to me and specifically thanked me for the work that we did with our shelter and helping accommodate their, you know, their residents up here, and specifically because we allowed animals, which was a huge deal. And I just, you know, I wanted to share that with you. And I just, you know, I wanted to share that with the council that I did hear a lot of compliments. And Vice Mayor, you'd appreciate this. I, I thought of you right at the end, I can't remember the woman's name from KSRO that she was moderating the whole thing. And she kind of wrapped up the entire thing by saying, "The rebuilding of Santa Rosa won't start with the first nail that gets driven into a board. It started with that knock on your door from your neighbor telling you to get out." Or that's paraphrased, but that was kind of the, you know, the amount of unity and people coming together was just incredible. Then that night I attended Love and Justice fundraiser with a fundraiser specifically for the Great Day Labor Center and Undocu Fund. And one of the kind of, I wouldn't say forgotten elements, but the undocumented workers who really support our businesses and here in county, in the county, they don't qualify for FEMA. And so they may still have their apartments, but you know, if they were house cleaners, landscapers and now all these homes burned down, they now are affected. So the undocufund.org, you can go there. They're raising funds to specifically help those people that are affected by the fires that may not qualify for aid that's generally available to everybody else. And so that was a very powerful thing and it was interesting that what they're doing that is they had a woman, she had five kids and they retrained her to, to do drywall, sheet rock and drywall. And there's an opportunity now where a lot of the people that might have been landscapers or whatever can be retrained and they're working on retraining for construction work with, to kind of supplement the need for contractors. Let's see, attended the Sonoma County Alliance meeting on November 1st, which was great. Santa Rosa talking about the ideas and Councilmember Neokas mentioned some of the creative ideas that they were talking about, about seeing if you can, you know, build ADU first while you rebuild your home, some of those interesting concepts. The livability workshop was, it was a, a great event. I took the opportunity to not post anything on the wall and really just try to absorb. There are a number of good comments that immediately, you know, I post the agenda on my city council page and I always post a PDF and there was a comment on there, "Why is everything else in PDF? It needs to be, you know, easier to reformat." So I posted the link to where you can see it online as well. So there is an immediate effect and we do read those things. And I'm looking forward to Ria taking that big old stack and getting that, that list to us so we can read all the comments individually. And I'm looking forward to future events at Nor- Oregon, Latino-focused event is planned and I'd like to see one that's maybe geared toward families, get a jumpy house and some pizza and so parents could be inside doing the same exercise that we did up there. And finally, I took a tour of the, the roundabout project with Mario and Brent and Councilmember Gold. And it was very interesting. I actually got to go down into the hole and I posted some of the videos from, that I took while I was down there on, on, on my Facebook page. So that's, that's really about it, thank you.
Councilmember Neokas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be really brief. It's been a good, exciting three weeks. I also attended the Dia de los Muertos, it was fantastic. Again, I'll, I'll emphasize the, the appreciation for all the work that, that the staff has been doing the past several weeks. It's just, it's amazing and it makes, really has made a big difference, the Dia de los Muertos, but also with the, with the livability session. It was a really nice substantive set of conversations that I think is kind of, it's setting the tone for where we're going forward. And it was a, very much appreciate the quality, the quality of that, of that event. And you know, I'll just, one, one more of the, of a general kind of, of a conversation topic. I have a meeting with Amy Appleton with the Sheriff of Sonoma County. And there, this is an organization that, that offers, I think I mentioned last time, that offers housing that can be shared instead of with, with other, with people who don't have housing instead of just being rented or, so it's more of a, of a share concept. What made me think about this is, is, you know, this, this fire has really kind of, it, it's, it's destructive, it's also transformative, right? And I think that there's some real opportunities for making these connections that we ordinarily wouldn't have made. And, 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 you know, seeing solutions to problems that maybe would, we would have let simmer in the back, it's a bad, bad term. But, you know, it really is giving us opportunity to kind of rethink and make, make new alliances, make, make new connections. And I'm really, really looking forward to seeing what else comes up, comes up from that. The, the more of the official announcements on the 18th, I also met with, with the Comstock Group to discuss their, their project. On the 27th, I met with Chana Jones regarding some, who was a local Realtor who had some ideas about incorporating tiny homes into, into the mix of, of housing types and how it can be used as maybe a transitionary type. And that, that was very interesting, transitionary between higher density and lower density, right? And then on the third, on the 30, on the third, I met with Brian Swimmer about the HGID. Those were my official meetings. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Neokas?
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, so much, there's been so many days that have gone by. Four weeks after the fire here, three weeks since our last meeting because of the anomaly of, of October. So yeah, many meetings were canceled at the county. Schools in Santa Rosa just opened a week ago. And as I already mentioned, my own experience as a teacher, I'm noticing a lot of trauma and a lot of things. And so living in Heelsburg and appealing to people directly through a personal letter in the newspaper in our Tribune to invite people to step up. In my personal letter to the community as a citizen with my own phone number and my own email address, I have received 27 phone calls and more than 50 emails regarding housing for specifically teachers, which was my hope, middle-class earners who are looking for temporary and long-term housing. I have personally placed found temporary housing for 11 teachers, one in the city limits of our town. There's no data regarding what else was achieved except for two Realtors informing me that insurance companies are doing the bidding. And they are, as a property manager wrote, quote, "I am getting really good rents for second homes and VRBOs." That's a text that was sent to me by a prominent Realtor in town who said that there's really good rents. I understand the anti-gouging, but I want to be aware of what I think Naomi Klein calls disaster capitalism. The same property manager, land developer on Matheson, or has Matheson in the name, told me she was offered $16,000 from an insurance claims person. This is at the farmer's market in front of other people and essentially said that, you know, this is going to happen. Housing continues to be my number one focus. I have a year and a half left on my tenure and if I choose to run again, that will be. But I want to mention, I'm not changing that focus. I hope my colleagues on council, my city manager, my city attorney and all the department heads understand my appreciation on this focus. When I went to the Farmer's Markers, the pumpkin carving contest and I got to see the children and I got to see Councilwoman Gold in her bee outfit. When I went to the Day of the Dead and went into this plaza that looks pretty darn stark in this picture and austere, but that day there was life, there was heart, there was fun, there was frolic and it was one of the best days I've ever had in this town. I want to thank all the police department, the fire department, the recreation department, our People's Park, our People's Park, our precious plaza donated to the citizens of Heelsburg by our town's namesake, Harmon Heald. He donated the land and I've been looking at that. Holly has been helping me look at the history of our property, which is called the Plaza Park now. I did meet with the Sunrise Rotary Club, I got to go to that. I'm supposed to be joining that great group in the morning and listened to city manager characterize where we're going with development. And also I did meet with other citizens regarding the ESTAT, which I guess is now called something else or maybe that's the new acronym, but it was the RUDAT. I did go on the roundabout tour by myself and got to meet with Mr. Winters and our city's engineer, Mario. And I did have the tour of the roundabout. I also heard from many local businesses regarding dissatisfaction with the roundabout. And I want to make sure everybody hears that there's, there was some concern about, obviously, big concerns about the roundabout and how it's affecting our city, that's our front door. Wednesday morning, I met with the Northern Sonoma County Air Pollution Control District, which is a local district. I'm on the board and there's really going to be some changes, well, not really, there are going to be some changes. And I need to tell you guys about that at another time perhaps. Friday meeting with the now Chair of the Heelsburg Planning Commission, Richard Tracy, our new commissioner, our chairman of the Planning Commission of Heelsburg. And I got to talk to him about the design review guidelines and where we're going with the, with our planning commission's composition and kind of looking at different ways that we can honor what we say, which is the city council is the governing body of the city. And so rich times in this town, but I would echo that that plaza and that whole experience post-fire, going into the Day of the Dead was a healing time for our city. And I just hope that we continue to embrace trusting that we can close down streets, trusting that pedestrian is where we want to go downtown. We want less cars, fewer cars and more people and we want to create more opportunities for art and ways for people to be alive and to be together and to not just have the fractionizing that sometimes happens based on what the events are. I like the, the whole approach with that and I really want to congratulate our city for having such a wonderful day of the dead. But I would argue it was the day of the living in so many ways. I felt so good about that. So thanks, Mayor. I just want to also say there's local artists in this town like Gendala. And I don't know if you guys know Spence, but he's putting out really cool t-shirts at the farmer's market that talk about how we really are committed to each other. And no t-shirt or piece of art will represent it more than the way we vote and we make decisions to support our community and the people that really need us to stand for them in times where we really do need to get beyond the money and get back to what community is, which is people and lives and health and ways to approach how do we make everyone feel like they're part of something instead of sometimes feeling excluded. So thank you so much. It was a good three weeks, but there's so much work to be done and I look forward to being a part of that.
Thank you. I, I think all the meetings that I attended were covered by my colleagues. So the, the one thing I just wanted to read was a letter from Battalion Chief in Santa Rosa talking about some of what our firefighters did on the fateful night. So this is a letter to, to our chief. "Chief, on the night of October 8th or the morning of October 9th, one of your engines made a heroic stand at 3585 Round Barn Circle along with the Santa Rosa and Grayton engine. These three companies were forced to protect a four-story occupied senior assisted living facility that sits atop an oak-filled draw. The actions they took that night were nothing short of miraculous and undoubtedly saved hundreds of lives. I would like to honor them properly with letters of commendation and the problem is, I don't know who the crew is." And so our chief was able to get back to them and that was Captain Montana and firefighter Rado who were on that strike team. And so I just wanted to recognize them and commend them for their actions that they did that night. So that's all I have. Thank you. And moving on to city manager reports, under item four, we have an update on temporary winter shelter for the homeless. City Manager Macalian.
Thank you, Mayor McCaffrey. Councilmembers, just want to give you a brief update on where we are with regards to winter temporary shelters for the homeless. This goes back in September 2017, at a community meeting, I believe, helped by Ms. Jonas, at the library presented a need to provide temporary emergency warranty shelters for the homeless. There's a number of other items dealing with the homeless which were presented at that meeting as well. Based on that, staff met with Colleen Carmichael at Reach for Home, met with Reverend Sally Hubbell of St. Paul's Church, Sergeant Casanova, Heelsburg PD, met to talk about what we could do to address just that one item specifically. Because winter is coming, we wanted to make sure that when there is a code blue, which is what, what the county calls, when the rains, rains are coming and people need to get off the streets, we had a place here in Heelsburg to be able to provide for them. So through the incredible generosity of Reverend Hubbell and St. Paul's Church, we're going to be working through Reach for Home. The city has a contract with Reach for Home. We are looking at the scope of that, which will be able to encompass all the things that need to be done that will provide temporary shelter through that service. So again, we'll continue to work with Colleen on that as we make sure that the, those folks are taken care of, at least for those, for those instances. The other item we're working on is showers. One of the, the challenges we have is just, just hygiene for homeless. There's, it's really, it's more than hygiene, it becomes a health and safety issue for them. And so working with Colleen, Reach for Home, looking at temporary showers and how, how we could look at that. So that's one of the conversations we're having as well. I know there's lots more to talk about with regards to homelessness, but those are the items which we were looking to deal with just initially. I know there'll be more conversations at the council level and the community with the other items as well, but I wanted to give council a brief update on those items.
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to add to that, that, you know, the city manager and I, over the last few months and thanks to Gail and Rick and Colleen and all of their efforts with, you know, kind of highlighted in the meetings that we've been having at the library, we've had a couple of them over the last few months. You know, it really kind of drives home kind of these issues of, you know, essentially people living in the bushes all around us all the time. And we have a number of people who are extremely well dedicated to helping those folks. And, you know, I think we've, we're working on both short, mid and long-term solutions. And I can't go into too many details about those just because they're, I, I think the, the temporary wintertime shelter is something that was born from last year when we were really caught in a bad spot when we had lots of rainfall. And we really didn't know what to do. And so this, this year, the city's been taking some, you know, proactive action on being ready for that. But I just want to say that that's by no means all we're doing. So, you know, we're also, I've, I've met personally with Mike Johnson from COTS and we have a meeting set up to go look at some other solutions for midterm actual housing solution. And that's kind of to be determined. And I think at some point with, you know, when we get, and I've, I've also been speaking with some architects about kind of figuring out how it looks and things like that. And then, you know, obviously finding a place for it is, is really important as well. And I, I'm hoping that at some point in the near future, we'll be able to come before the council with some kind of a proposal that we can hopefully fund for, for temporary housing in the midterm and then leading to a more permanent solution for, you know, taking care of our homeless population, which, you know, they're, they number about 75, 75 individuals in, in our area. And I, I expect that with the fires, that that number will probably go up. And, you know, one thing I, I haven't done as much as, as I, as I should do is to go out and, and kind of talk to the, the troops on the ground, you know, and I, I want to do that. And I can see a number of you in the audience and I want to get together and kind of talk about some of the things that I'm working on, that we're working on here in the city and, and that we'll bring forward hopefully in the near future. So, but, you know, this, I think the, you know, I really want to commend St. Paul's and Reach for Home and all the work that they've been doing as well as, as Gail and her organization, you know, just really driving it home that this is something that we have to focus on. And, you know, while we're thinking about things like parking and whether or not we can buy underwear in town, there are people that are living out in the bushes literally. And the rains are coming and so we need to be cognizant of that. And, you know, so I'll be getting together with you very soon to talk about that in more further detail and exactly what you need and where to go from there. Thank you. Any questions or from council about this?
So Mayor, are you satisfied with what we're actually going to do? I mean, you feel confident because I haven't been in, in on any of this as far as understanding. So you feel our city is going to be providing for those 75? You feel like we're at a place where we know what we need to do and we need to be flexible and obviously support this effort? I mean, as a council, we're supporting you to, to take the lead on that.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm, I'm doing that. So I'm not satisfied and, and I don't think I will be satisfied until... So, I'm not satisfied and, and I don't think I will be satisfied until, um, uh, Rick and Gail are satisfied. And so, um, I'm going to be working with them. I mean, they're, they're a lot more kind of focused on it. I mean, I think that, you know, there, there are obvious limitations to, um, you know, service the government can provide and, and I can go into that in depth, but we would go on and on. But I just want to say that, that, you know, we're, we're thinking about it and we, you know, I just want to open up more of a close line of communication between everybody on the ground, exactly what we need, just so that we can, we can address the needs and, and, you know, we have, um, resources here that we can, that we can deploy, you know? And I, I know that we have a council here that, um, really cares about this stuff and they want to do something about it. So, um, it's just a matter of kind of putting two and two together. And, uh, I think you're going to see that happen in the, in the short term. So... Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just briefly, I just want to reinforce what I said earlier about the, about this, the, uh, the fire creating opportunities, right? Because, you know, we ask, we have, you know, seventy-five, uh, homeless, but you know what? We actually have suddenly thousands of people homeless. Um, and I think that this is an opportunity for us to really kind of evaluate, um, systemically how, how we as a, as a, as a region, as a county, address this, 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 this issue. I think it's a real, it's a real, uh, interesting opportunity, again, to, to make those connections with the various, uh, providers and services and, uh, and think about this, uh, in a more urgent and holistic way than we, maybe than we have in the past. So, I'm looking forward to that.
Right. And I think, I think you brought up a really good point there and that's kind of the, um, you know, the seventy-five homeless people that we, um, have here in town, were here before the fires happened. And, um, you know, we were able to open up a emergency shelter at the, uh, community center, uh, during the fires. And, you know, I just, I just want to kind of, just want to say that, that the difference between somebody who lost their house in the fires and that somebody who didn't have a house before the fires happened, I mean, there's really no difference, right? They're both without a home. And I just think that, you know, we need to be, um, we need to be supportive to everybody, right? And I think that, um, there's a lot of, like you said, I mean, we have an emergency declaration. Sonoma County is a, um, emergency area, you know, nationally, uh, state, what, you know, as far as the state's concerned as well. And I think that, yes, there are opportunities to take advantage of that situation and, um, I'm certainly thinking of that. And, uh, but I'm not just thinking about the people displaced by the fires, I'm also thinking about, um, you know, these are residents of Healdsburg and, uh, whether they have a mailbox or not, um, they're still here. So, um, that's something that I think, um, we'll get back to it and we can talk about it offline as well. And, um, and I also see, uh, Mrs. Pedderite, the, uh, second grade teacher from Healdsburg Charter School Elementary. And I know that her and her class are doing a coat and sock and hat drive, which, uh, will be culminated here on the twenty-first. And, um, so that's something that we can also get together and talk about. And, um, so, I mean, there's a lot of support in the community out there and, um, it's really, uh, it's really coming together. And I just want to say that when the time comes, you know, we're all going to have to step up and, and support it. And I hope you guys will, will do that when the time comes. So, thank you. If there's nothing else, I'll, uh, move on to public comments on non-agenda items. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters of general interest that are not on the agenda but related to city council and RSA business. Pursuant to the Brown October, the city council cannot consider any issues or take any action on these requests during the comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their time to three minutes maximum so that everybody has a chance to speak. And if there's something on the consent calendar, uh, that you'd like to talk about, please let us know and we'll, uh, consider pulling that and having that discussed aside. Gail, welcome.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank you for really stepping up with this problem that I'm so concerned about. I'm spending almost all my waking time working on it. But I'm right here now to let the Healthcare Foundation and the people here know there are two things that I'm involved in and others are involved in that can relieve some of the problems with people like getting rides to the doctor. And that is the Neighbors Network, wwwnnoh.org. We've been doing this since April of two thousand and fourteen. We've helped hundreds of people. We're free, we're fun. And so, that would be a place for people to go who, with limited resources, or even if they have a lot of money, it's not means tested. And also, for a low-cost senior activity, we have the prune pits, sixty and above. And we have been planted September sixth and we are having so much fun. We're trying to do something right through the winter and then we'll be starting in the spring and it's only five dollars for a year. So, we're hoping that people join us and there's every level of skill and lack of skill. I'm the very bottom. Now, in another matter, I've been watching what the House of Representatives is doing and on Wednesday, they made a proposal that is being, going to be, uh, they hope to push it through before Christmas, which affects our affordable housing funding. And as I'm sure you're aware, if families of less, earn less than eighty percent of the area median income and eighty percent is sixty thousand or less, sixty-six thousand or less, you have to have subsidies from somewhere to build the housing. So, most of our housing, and I had sent out a map and I believe I sent it to you, shows that our, most of our affordable housing was done with the low-income housing tax credit. That works in conjunction with the housing bonds. And the article I read about this, uh, it basically says if we don't keep what we have, which is the low-income housing tax credit and the housing bonds, the number of affordable housing built across the country will be reduced by two-thirds. So, calculate what that would mean here as we make this huge effort to do more, to end up with a third of the money we're going to need. Why am I asking or telling you this? Because I believe in being active on every single issue that matters and most residents, this is something that they're not paying attention to because it's hard, you know? And it's not very, hardly shows up in any of the articles. And I know you're super, super busy, but sometime if somebody, somewhere on the website or here could just explain, what is this and what's at stake? So, though those of us who like to be active and send letters to the representatives and all that can get active. You know, is it hopeless because we're just a little town? No, we could start something. And I think we really need to urge support in our, of Congress, including other congresspeople to support this because it's so important to our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Gail. Ken, welcome.
Hi, Ken Bookanyani. Again, I'm here to talk about the, our Pardon Lane problem. The Pardon neighbors met with Clay Thistle this morning and discussed the rain-water problem that we're having. That's the rain-water runoff from the Gulf Porous that's destroying our properties. It's been over two years that we've been waiting for this problem to be solved. We left this morning's meeting not knowing when the problem was going to be resolved. Plus, the house that is affected the most isn't even on the plan. So, I don't understand that at all. What's really bothering us is that we see all the money that's being spent by the city. One point four million more for the roundabout, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a study on North Healdsburg Avenue. What's the deal? We're, we are local, we support Healdsburg year-round. Why are we being treated this way? Like I said before, we've been waiting for two years. How much longer do we have to wait? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Welcome.
Good evening. I apologize in advance how this may sound. I've been to the dentist, my face is still a little paralyzed. And I apologize in advance for the tardiness of this message. And this message is simply, thank you. On the evening of October 8th, I went to bed after a splendid Sunday. And I got up in the wee hours of the morning with, uh, what was shaping up to be a less-than splendid day. I really needed a place to go. The only place that I could think of going was, was where I work. It was surrounded by vineyards and it's chock-full of water, some of it higher quality than others, but still it felt pretty safe. And during a, a portion of that morning, I had heard that the community center had been opened up to, um, shelter some of the people that had been evacuated from, uh, the areas. My name's Patrick Foose. I, I used to live in the Fountain Grove area of Santa Rosa. And, um, on the, the day that I needed a place to stay, you guys gave it to me. I needed some food, you guys gave it to me. And my world had been turned upside down and you gave me, uh, a sympathetic ear. And I really appreciate it. I want to say thank you to each of you individually because I saw you there. I talked to you. You helped me out. And I'd like to thank you guys collectively. You represent the city of Healdsburg. The city of Healdsburg allowed me to come and they, they helped me out when I really needed it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Russ Messing. I have a poem. It's called, um, "Farmer's Market, October fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen." We came to the market to feel normal, to gather in community. The sky above was blue streaked only by contrails of air tankers and a thunka-thunka of helicopters, delivering water, returning for more. The morning warm, booths ripe and rife with fresh and organic vegetables and fruit, meat, fish, oils, crafts, years of hard work and love. The tourists were gone, the hotels empty, restaurants shuttered, till the winds changed, the town just ours, strange and empty, relieved. And, and the vendors were there, the music played and the locals came, bags over shoulders, stories of relief and sadness, of heroism and fear, of thanks to whatever power or luck have spared us. Joe and Spence donated food and drink to a booth set up to receive donations. The air bloomed with gratitude and that old feeling of belonging to this place, precious, still standing. We breathed relief. Above here, the sky was blue, just another day. And sales were slow, it didn't matter. Farmers and shoppers asked, "Where were you? What do you know?" Said, "I came here just to feel normal." It was a time to connect, to tell our stories. Of fear and preparation, of grief, relief and gratitude, of ways to help, we hugged. The winds and providence had blown our way, we knew it. In the midst of confusion and disbelief, of fear, concern and plain dumb luck, life went on. The sun shined, we stopped, connected, traded tales, moved on, gave thanks, were generous with each other, paused in this brief respite from horror and confusion, from fear and the existential knowledge that we're not in control, that life is a crapshoot, that connection counts and belonging too. Thank God for this farmer's market, for us locals and this blessed town, for those who keep us safe, for our small, still caring community. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Mayor, welcome.
That was so beautiful. My name's Ariel Kelly, I live on Grove Street. How to follow that? Well, um, as you, most of you know, we started the Healdsburg Free Store operated by Corazon Healdsburg to support fire survivors, um, that are residing in and around our community who are in need of replacing necessary items that were lost in the fire, uh, or for those who've been economically impacted by the fires. And one of the things that we're starting to see more often, so we've recently changed our hours of the store, I will share with you that we are now open Wednesday through Saturday from ten AM to four PM. And we're located at one ninety Foss Creek Circle, Unit K, just to the north of the post office. A number of folks that have been coming into the store over the last week or so, um, are completely unaware of the millions of dollars that have been raised through fire relief funds, whether it's the Red Brick Credit Union Fund, United Way, Undocu Fund, Tipping Point Fund, Community Foundation Resilience Fund, you name it, there's a lot out there. And several have different applications that are online that people need to go to, to find those applications. And so, people come in somewhat of a desperate state, saying, "I finally found an apartment, but I've been out of work for a few weeks and I need money for a deposit and first and last month's rent." Or, "I found a car we can lease, but I need money for a down payment for that car," et cetera, et cetera. And people are really in a, a desperate financial situation, let alone a desperate housing situation. So, one of the things that we put together through Corazon and Bridge Lab and other organizations that are wanting to help fire survivors in the community, uh, is to set up a fire fund registration event for people who don't have internet access or who don't have computers, or they might have both of those things and have no idea where to even find information about all these funds that have been set up. So, this coming Saturday, from eleven AM to three thirty PM, we're going to have an event at the Healdsburg Free Store where anyone who wants to volunteer, who has a, a computer, um, a laptop, can come and just, we will train you on where to find those applications. And we will have seats available next to you. And we will invite members of the community who are in need of applying for these funds to show up at noon. Volunteers come at eleven, fire survivors come at noon, and we assist them with filling out these applications. You're basically just allowing someone to use your computer to sign up for these applications that are online. We also have translators available and we're paying translators to come. So, if anyone is a fluent Spanish speaker or fluent Vietnamese speaker, we're seeking both volunteers with computers and also, uh, translators who can assist with that process. And that's this coming Saturday. People can find out more information through the Healdsburg Free Store Facebook page, Bridge Lab, uh, or they can talk to me or other members of the Corazon team. And we hope to see you all there and, uh, thank you for your help in getting the word out.
Thank you. Thank you for that wonderful event as well. That was, uh, fabulous. Anybody else? Comment or question on non-agenda item? Tim, welcome.
Two quick ones. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to the city and the council for acting so quickly and with such, and with, and with such alacrity in work, uh, approving the special ordinance on ADUs and on RVs. It's unfortunate that it took a crisis like those fires to get that to happen. Uh, and frankly, we already have a crisis for housing, which in itself could have been the catalyst to get that done on the front end, but we proved we can move quickly. And I hope that that's something that in the future, that's something that we continue to do, particularly when there are these needs that have to be satisfied. On a more objective point, but something I think that needs to be brought to the attention of the council. Last Wednesday, the Liveability Forum at the Chana Claire took place. There was a lot of great energy there and a lot of promise for lots of good things to occur. Frankly, many were surprised and dismayed, uh, at the forum that took place at the Chana Claire. You'll remember that this was initially supposed to be a tourism forum. The strong, strong perception, not by those who earn their living through tourism, but by the majority of those residents in attendance who don't, believed that this might have been managed in the back room. This is thought because the topic of tourism was overtly managed out of the public discussion to the point of not even having a tourism heading on one of the breakout groups. Frankly, this really wasn't an indication of being open or transparent. And I would implore the council and the city manager in the future to work better at satisfying those objectives. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else comment or question on non-agenda item? Okay, I'll close the public comment and we'll move on to the consent calendar. Item six.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I'm, I'm happy to move, move that we accept it. I, the only, my only qualification is that I, I for one would like to see more, I've, I've actually discussed with this, with the city manager, but I just wanted to share. Um, I'd like to see more of a connection of these, of these disbursement with, with their budgeted allocations and just to kind of see how we're tracking as, as, as we shell out these large amounts of money. So, uh, just as a, uh, I, I'm bringing my, my software business intelligence experience to bear and I'll be discussing- and I'll be discussing how we can perhaps get more of that interactive, you know, view of these, of this data with Assistant City Manager Ipeleti in the weeks to come.
Wonderful.
But with that, I'll move to accept the consent calendar as is.
Second. I have a motion in the second. May I have a rule call vote, please?
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley?
Yes.
Councilmember Noyokas?
Yes.
Vice President Manzel?
Yes.
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item seven, public hearings. We have none, but we also have a public hearing on the, on their item eight A, renewal of the Hillsburg Tourism Improvement District. Assistant City Manager Ipeleti, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor McCaffrey. This item is the Hillsburg Tourism Improvement District. The recommended action is to receive public testimony on the request to renew the Hillsburg Tourism Improvement District. The renewal process, on September eighteenth, council adopted a resolution of intent and set public meeting and public hearing dates. Tonight, we're holding the public meeting. It is planned that on November twentieth, we'll hold a public hearing and consider a resolution of formation as well as adopting a contract with the chamber to administer. There is an additional public meeting required in process, giving the council and the public additional opportunities to consider and voice an opinion. Again, that meeting is scheduled for November twentieth. Little bit of background, the Property and Business Improvement District Law of nineteen ninety-four grants cities and counties the authority to establish and renew business improvement districts. The purpose of the district is to levy assessments against property and businesses in the district. Also, to pay for the cost of certain activities and improvements benefiting property or businesses paying the assessment. And the district is customized to meet the needs of the district. They're designated, created and governed by businesses paying the assessment. They're adopted, the district management plan is adopted, it governs the district and outlines the boundaries, assessment, improvements, activities to be funded, and the term of the district. Funds are collected by businesses, paid to the city and dispersed to the owners association. Right now, the chambers serving is that and administering the management plan. Funds cannot be redirected to other programs and must be utilized in conformance with the management plan. Little history of this district. This district was developed and formed in two thousand thirteen. The district provides stable funding source for marketing and sales promotion efforts of lodging businesses in Hillsburg. The district was formed for a five-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. In January, the city received, January two thousand seventeen, received a notice that the lodging businesses wished to renew the district. The management plan proposes to continue the district generally as it currently exists, the district to include all lodging businesses existing and future in the city. All lodging business owners would continue to pay an annual assessment of two percent of gross short-term room rental revenue that's collected on stays of thirty days or less. Also proposed is a term of ten years expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. The city will continue to collect the monthly assessment and forward to the owners association, and the chamber is, will, shall serve as the owners association managing the funds, implementing the programs and providing annual reports. Proposed activities to be funding including district development, twenty percent, city administration, five percent, administration and operations, ten percent, sales and marketing, sixty percent, with a contingency of five percent. The district development projects proposed include transportation and parking solutions at ninety thousand and cultural and arts for thirty thousand. The city's role in renewing the district. The council may modify the management plan, including reducing the proposed assessments, modify the proposed activities funded by the assessment. Examples may include parking, trash receptacles, public restrooms, parks, sidewalks and plazas. Some other possible changes to the plan may include revising the term, maybe from ten years to five years, revise the sales and marketing portion, maybe place a cap on the city's administration, possibly this sixteen, seventeen amount, maybe plus a little bit for legal, something like that, maybe place a cap on the chamber's administration allowance. The chamber was talking possibly a cap of like sixty-five thousand. Those are just possibilities. If the district is renewed, per the proposed draft management plan, the city council and the district board have the authority to adjust budget allocations between the categories by no more than fifteen percent of the total budget per year. Again, before you tonight is to receive public testimony on the request to renew the Hillsburg Tourism Improvement District. That concludes staff's report.
Thank you. And I just want to see, this is, this is, I think, maybe the fourth time we've, we've been tasked with talking about this. The primary purpose tonight is to receive public testimony, but I know that we might have some questions up here, and so, I'd like to start off, if there's any questions from council about the management plan.
I have a comment, a question. I keep hearing about the fourth time there, but what I want to clarify is the process allows, is there a slide that can show the actual legal process of this, of this, of this task at hand to renew this? So, I mean, absolutely, I remember the nine eighteen meeting, and I just want to be clear, I think we've only had one public hearing, is that correct? This is our second one. So, I wasn't sure if there was other times that we talked, but I'm, I just wanted to clarify that this is actually the sequencing and we're at meeting two for a public hearing, right?
That, that is correct. There was a meeting held in April to discuss the possibility of renewing the HTID and getting direction from council. There was, was a yes or no question, though, is that correct?
Right.
There wasn't a discussion. I mean, I did research and I'm just going to clarify that in April, we didn't discuss.
So, there was public comment taken at the April meeting. And I want to clarify, this is the first public hearing we've had.
Right.
This is not the second. This is the first public hearing we had.
Exactly.
So, we had a meeting in April with public comment was taken. This item then came back on the eighteenth of September. This is, we're opening the public hearing portion of this process.
Right, so are there any questions on the management plan, Councilmember Noyokas?
Yes, I'd like to clarify the, on slide thirteen, the city's role after renewing district. You say the, in the slide, you say the city council and the district board have the authority. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the mechanism is that there's a three-person subcommittee that makes recommendations to the board, and that three-person subcommittee is a member of the at-large public HTID and of city representative, and it could be city council, could be city staff. Is that, is my understanding correct? It's not like we actually have the specific authority.
Yeah. Someone's got to answer that. Welcome, Brian.
So, just to help out, Councilmember Noyokas, you are correct. So, as part of the new management plan, we'd have a subcommittee that would sort of serve to advise if we were going to, more so to advise the district development portion of the pie, which is how we would spend the funds designated towards the services and the improvements and the cultural events, sort of that have a dual role of benefiting life for our community and benefiting life for tourists simultaneously. And then that, so initiating the fifteen percent each year would happen at the HTID level with some input and direction from that group, and then proposed to the city council, and the city council would have to say yes or no to amending the management plan from its current status of the sixty-twenty, five-ten-five split.
Thank you for the clarification. So, the committee, the subcommittee recommends the board, the board approves, sends it to the council, and we make the final yes or no.
Exactly.
Thank you.
If my may, so how would you characterize the differences in this plan over the two thousand thirteen plan? Just overall, what were the values? I mean, I can certainly see the arts are in there, and there's a parking issue, there's going to be some allocation for that. I was just curious what the values were, what the overall position or different, different ways you came about to make the adjustments or the changes if you did.
It's going to be a long answer. But needless to say, the old management plan was sort of status quo. Eighty percent of the pie went to sales and marketing, and that was probably like ninety percent or maybe ninety-five percent of all the management plans for the state of California. So, we were pretty much just right in line, business as usual. Hillsburg is a bit of a special community, and that I do think some of the issues that we're experiencing here, we're actually listening to. So, I would say that, you know, in developing this new management plan, it's been a long process, one that I feel honored to have been a part of, but I met with a group of community members that were concerned with sustainable tourism and then livability for our community. And then, as the council has mentioned at different points, and then the concern public through the April meeting, the September meeting, and I'm sure we'll hear more tonight, taking that feedback in and crafting a plan that I think is, for lack of a better term, fireproof. And what I mean by that is, if you look at the existing plan that we have before you right now, does this plan work if it were the plan that was in place for two thousand seventeen and beyond? And in October of two thousand seventeen, we all know what happened, but we could easily today take this plan and say, in two thousand eighteen, we need to shift fifteen percent of the pie away from district development, and we need to put it back into sales and marketing because the national media painted this picture of Hillsburg, in addition to Sonoma County and Napa County, that it is not the place to go, which, by the way, I think is going to take about a year at least to sort of overcome. Now, let's imagine that the fires didn't happen in October, and we had gained another ten percent in occupancy growth this year with our existing inventory. We could have very easily said, okay, well, maybe we should take ten percent away from sales and marketing and shift it over to district development so that we could support more events like, you know, Jazz Fest, you know, any of the events that you see that benefit, Art After Dark, any of those events that you see that really benefit kind of the community, that a mix of tourists and our local community could enjoy. I mean, it's just a very easy shift, if that makes sense. So, to me, if the existing plan was in place today, it would have answered basically all of those questions that the community has kind of raised throughout this process, and it would have been tangible. So, hopefully, does that help?
So, is there a possibility in between these next, or the next public comment for year, the HTID board to actually modify again, or is the plan that you submitted, that's cement, that's baked, it's done, that's, you have to follow those percentages?
The statute is now set up so that you will give us your suggested changes. And as long as you, you can lower the term from ten years to one year. You can lower the percentage from two percent basically to whatever the smallest amount is, point two-five percent, that you feel reasonable. And then, you can modify the allocation of the pie if you want to by less than fifteen percent, and then it would sort of exist in its current form and move through. If the HTID board wanted to make changes, we would have to make changes and then go back and repetition and start the process all over again at stage one. So, we're kind of mid-process right now, which leaves the council in the driver's seat, if that makes any sense.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hagley?
I just have a quick clarification question on slide number, let's see, thirteen. And then I'm looking at your proposal where you have the pie chart with the allocation, sales and marketing of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, district development a hundred and twenty, assuming an annual budget of six hundred thousand. And so, my question is, is the fifteen percent on that six hundred grand, which would be ninety percent, or ninety thousand dollars that can be shifted, or is it based on, you take out the admin and all that stuff and the reserves, and it's just based on district development and sales and marketing, which would be seventy-two thousand?
Your fifteen percent change is on the gross, so it would be the total two percent collected.
Okay, so your example with if the fires happened or didn't happen, I mean, next year, then it would be taking ninety thousand dollars from one side to the other?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, just in simple terms.
I mean, if you're asking for kind of where my head is, you know, Napa, it has, it has eight million dollar budget to pull from their resources. Sonoma County has five million to pull from for their resources. With essentially twenty-five million dollars in rooms revenue for the city of Hillsburg as a combined total, just a general number, it's pretty close, we would typically want to throw one to two-point-five million at this. And I'm talking about, that would be our marketing budget for two thousand eighteen based on the fires and based on an expansion or two new hotels opening next year. Sort of to maintain where we were, we would be closer to one million, and then to expand, we would be closer to two-point-five million. Given the fires and the attention from the national media, that kind of throws everything a little bit out of whack. So, I don't know if I'm necessarily answering your question, but essentially, we would want to take fifteen percent out of district development, if we were rewriting it, which we're not doing, we would, we would probably want to take the, if this was in place, we would be petitioning you probably tonight to move fifteen percent from district development over to sales and marketing, because given the current situation, that would be a better, a better plan for two thousand eighteen.
And so, what I'm trying to clarify is fifteen percent, district development in your proposal based on a six hundred thousand dollar total budget is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Exactly.
So, are you talking about fifteen percent of the one-twenty or fifteen percent of the total?
The gross.
Just hypothetically, you would take ninety thousand.
Your new pie would look like seventy-five percent sales and marketing, five percent district development. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And so, that's on an annual basis, that the city has some flexibility?
Yeah, the district has the flexibility to, in my mind, honor its commitment to the city and the community. And you know, you have to keep in mind, as far as two thousand eighteen comes, the HTID would have two main goals. One would be to maintain Hillsburg identity as wine country's best small town, because we all know that's what differentiates Hillsburg over every other wine country destination, and that's what's kind of most important to us as locals and as business people. And then the second one is to support the openings of two new properties. So, you know, again, that's, that's where, given those two things and what we need to do, we really want to try to put the impetus towards responding to what the national media has said in that. But again, I think the current plan and its current capacity sort of serves all needs.
Councilmember Gold, did you have a question? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just have a question. The potentially over ten years, five million, four hundred and eleven thousand dollars spent on marketing, so can you just take that, just break it down for me, what that means? You're paying journalists or people that write for columns, or what is the actual? I can't figure it out, and I did look at everything. And I don't mean to be rude, I don't understand why it costs that much to market, so can you just break it down? What are you paying for? Is it people to go out and be emissaries or writers? I just want to know what it actually looks like to market.
So, marketing would be broken down into several, several different verticals, but you have the PR vertical, which I think is what you're getting at. We have a local PR company, and we have a national PR company that bring journalists to Hillsburg, and we pay them to do that. And then, when they're here, they write at all levels. So, you get the people that will write for the value hotels that want to dip their feet in the river, and then you're going to get the people that essentially would write to go to Verite and have dinner at Single Thread, and you would get all... uh, to Verite and have dinner at Single Thread. And you would get all sections in between. And that's kind of the, one of the main focuses, uh, of HTID is, is, that's sort of the more credible marketing, uh, for our destination. Um, and then the other one would be, uh, there is an ad budget. Uh, the ad budget works out to about two hundred and ten thousand. Um, so, um, that had been sort of reduced down already from two hundred and eighty thousand in previous years. Um, and then, and then, uh, the rest of it would be, we have a, you know, a, a social media coordinator. We have a, a, a marketing coordinator that, that handles, you know, basically the board makes the decisions and then the coordinator does all the legwork. Um, so those are, those are kind of the things that fall into all of that, if that makes sense.
Other question over here?
You said two hundred and eight thousand for advertising. What did, what does that buy you? Is that full-page ads? Is that insert? Can you kind of clarify?
So we spend a lot, we spend a lot regionally, uh, with the special inserts in the Chronicle. I don't know if you've seen those. Um, we built a tastemaker campaign as sort of a strategic vision for Healdsburg marketing moving forward. And it gives essentially every individual business the opportunity to produce a taste and be a maker. So it doesn't matter if you're a raven and the arts is your taste and the venue is the maker. It can be all of, all of, all things sort of to all people. And that's why we came up with that. And there was some significant money that went towards the creative concept branding design and then the videos and the still photography for all of those. Um, so that would be a good portion of marketing dollars. Um, and then that would then regionally serve as us to, to sort of maintain our competitiveness in the Bay Area. So we focus a lot, North Bay, East Bay, and then Silicon Valley. I think tho, that's the largest feeder for the most part of people coming to Healdsburg. Um, again, we want overnight stays, uh, is kind of our goal, uh, because then they pay the bed tax and the city gets to keep the sixteen percent versus, uh, people coming from Windsor, Santa Rosa, or Cloverdale just for the day to wine taste, have lunch and leave. And then we get a fraction of the eight, eight percent sales tax. So, uh, that's what we focus on. The other part, uh, would go towards, uh, potentially, um, you know, larger ads. But again, uh, most, most of that we cover through, uh, the journalists that come to visit and actual do stories. We don't pay for ads in the New York Times. We don't pay for ads in the Washington Post. Uh, we will pay for, um, our presence online. Digital's huge. So we have to maintain a presence on winecountry.com. We have to maintain a presence on TripAdvisor. Um, and what that essentially does is somebody goes on and they're looking for a hotel in Wine Country and boom, Healdsburg pops up. And they click on Healdsburg, then they can get redirected, uh, to lodgings, uh, that are suitable for them. So hopefully that breaks it down a little bit.
Great, so thank you very much, Brian. I think, um, we're ready for some public testimony. Um, so at this point, I'd like to, uh, open up the public hearing. And if anyone is here, Alan, welcome.
I had, uh, wasn't gonna say anything tonight, but to, to sit here and realize that people in this audience have their businesses on the line and you're looking for a marketing, like how to, how do you market? Like, you know better than that. Ninety thousand dollars, Napa and Sonoma, they're spending millions of dollars. They want the business that comes to this town. They know that we're at risk and they're gonna take it. We need somebody who can stop this stuff and say, you know what? We want to save our community. These people have our jobs. They, they buy food here. They live here. This isn't an academic debate. That poem said it all. Like, this is our community. We're trying to save this community. I'm really tired of, I'm just looking for answers or I have questions. Get the answers. Ask the questions. We're here. We live in this community. We will talk to you. We will tell you everything that we can do to help save this community. But pissing and moaning over ninety grand when we've got millions of dollars coming at us from our neighbors? They want this traffic. They want the business that feeds not just hospitality, but everything that cascades down from that. I think it's completely unfair that nobody will just stand up and say that. That you are our elected representatives and you're pissing and moaning over ninety grand. That's foolish. And I'm sorry to be so emotional, but I just, I can't sit there and just like knock the gavel, John, we're all good. Let's go home. I, I, I think it's an embarrassment that we can't just say, October eighth, reset everything. And we have to focus on our community. We have to keep our businesses in business. But we don't have a community. Thank you, sorry.
Thanks, Alan. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Emily Fincher. I have lived in Healdsburg my entire life and I support the HTID. I'm a proud alumni of Healdsburg High and went through the whole Healdsburg Public School system and now attend school with an interest in engineering at Santa Rosa Junior College. I am not here before, because of a civics class, nor am I here because of a public speaking class. I am here because the outcome of what happens with the HTID directly impacts my family and our business, Cafe Lucia. My mom and uncle decided to open a restaurant celebrating our family's Portuguese culture about five years ago. At first, I was excited about it because I've been so proud of my Portuguese heritage. But to be honest, it was hard to adjust to my mom's new work schedule. She had to work nights and weekends and I was used to her working while I was in school. As a freshman in high school, I was not used to not having my mom around. I thought because my mom owned the place, she wouldn't have to work as much as she did, but I was quickly proven wrong. That was the first thing I learned about owning your own business. It's hard work. But once I started working with my mom at the restaurant, I got to see the joy it brought her to be able to follow her dream and I was so proud. I didn't get special treatment when I started out at the restaurant. I had to work my way up like everyone else does. First, I was a host, then a bussler, then a runner. And now you'll find me as a server. But honestly, I just do whatever my mom needs for that day. That brings me to the HTID. The restaurant is a small family business without a marketing budget. We have a lot of regular locals that come in, but also visitors like to come and go where the locals go. I worry that if there is no HTID, that our family restaurant and other small businesses will dwindle away. I am worried that the next generation of kids who grow up in Healdsburg would not be able to experience what it's like to work in a family business. Part of Healdsburg's charm is the small-town feel. And without the family-owned and operated business, part of that appeal will go away. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, uh, Scott Jordan. I own Cellars of Sonoma, right over there next to the worst in the Williamson, or right, right in between there. I'm, I'm the new guy. I've been here, we've been open about a year and a half and, uh, we, we've been thrilled to be here in Healdsburg and I, and a lot of the things you were talking about, I'm really happy to see. We were in Santa Rosa for eight years and it's night and day in, in the business. But to, where'd he go there? Yes, to his point, we're gonna get our butt kicked hard. And if we don't get really serious about getting the message out to people, they're getting the wrong message. They are getting this doom and gloom thing. And you're not gonna recover from that. You, you got a slow time coming up in January and February. You gotta be way ahead of that. And if Napa's, if Napa's laying down that kind of cash, they're gonna take the, they're gonna take that, that, that visitor. There's no question about it. They're gonna take it. And you're not gonna get it back for quite a while. And we don't even know what's in front of us as we move forward. Um, it's not the same game that you've had all, over these years. Um, they hate to change the game completely. And the bottom fell right out of it. And I talk to people from all over the country and they've been coming, thank God, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there. Um, but they're jaded by the, the message that they're hearing. And I'm hearing thirty, forty percent of the people that canceled their trips, you know where they're going? Pass Robles. And they're can, they're, they're going there and you know what? They may really like it over there. They may like going to that for their vacation. We can't afford to lose those people. So I guess, as the new guy, cause I, you know, what do I know? But, but the reality is, we have to get real serious about it, I think. That we need to get, you know, ninety thousand dollars is not a lot of money as far as the marketing. If your neighbor right over here is spending millions, they're not creaming. And, um, we gotta get serious 'cause, because Healdsburg is the premier destination in the, in the country. For Wine Country, you're sitting in the top three or four or five. And you, but you don't want to be on the bottom end of that. So, um, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be a voice as well. Uh, let's get real serious and I, but I do appreciate everything you guys have been doing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Yes, I'm the big supporter. I own Mateos and, uh, I was here in Cafe Lucia. And I worked for corporations before. I own my restaurant. And us fighting for ninety thousand dollars, I don't think you guys have no idea how much national marketing costs. You know, it's no idea. You know what I mean? Me working for, uh, corporations, I knew how much money we have. Change for one restaurant to be able to do marketing. For us to ask, for giving that support to don't kill a small business. Like I say, it's more, uh, they drive around, all these things is just killing us, right? It's, I hear people say we're doing a common, community, we supporting community. Yeah, but do we keeping this community going national? We have people coming to my restaurant and they said, you know, this is a disaster. You know, and we don't want to be in this town. You know what I mean? We're not coming back. We love everyone here, but we're not coming back. And for us to be able to subscribe, we need for you guys to open your eyes and say ninety thousand dollars in these times for marketing? Come on, it's a joke. I support it and I'm here to do anything that needs to be done for keeping a small business going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Um, I'd like to just speak in support of this, cause I'd like to give you a sense of the full circle of life from the tourism dollar. People come here as tourists. They love it here. They buy a second home. When they buy a second home, they come and support nonprofit events. When I look at the budget for my organization for the last decade, the money that went into improving the Healdsburg District Hospital, about half of it came from second homeowners. The money that came in the last five years that we were able to grant to healthcare institutions, about half of it came from second homeowners. A lot of people who aren't second homeowners anymore were second homeowners, but they were tourists first. And I'd also like to speak to the fact that a healthy business community means a healthy nonprofit community. I know who is everywhere around our streets downtown because I've walked them and I've met them and they give to us. And they don't just give to us, they give to every other nonprofit that asks them for something. That comes full circle. That pays wages for people who don't work in tourism. That pays services for people who don't have income to get those services. So investing in dollars that support tourism and keep that engine alive literally is what keeps a healthy town. I come from a town that didn't understand that in Northern Florida and that downtown is boarded up and abandoned. And we don't ever want to be that. We love our little town and we love what makes it special. But supporting the investment in the economic engine, I believe is a wise decision for us. Because it takes the full circle of life to build a community. And that's what these folks do for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lucy Luan Camilla Anne in All Seasons Vacation Suites. Um, I just wanted to clarify a few questions that Bridget's had and maybe all of you've had. We formed the HTID primarily because the, I worked tirelessly to form the county organization, that's Sonoma County Tourism. In Healdsburg, the businesses here chose not to join that. So we formed the HTID to have a marketing budget that would differentiate Healdsburg from the county efforts. And, um, that was hard for me to accept at the time, but we've developed a good campaign that's, has differentiated us. And we have, we are able to cooperate with the Sonoma County Tourism, all, all the businesses in Healdsburg except for lodging. So lodging is excluded from any of that for participating in any of their, um, PR efforts. And also, I think the way Brian described the PR efforts, we do not pay journalists to write stories or to come here. We pay a PR agency to gather people who are interested in writing stories about Healdsburg. And for me, as a small business, between the floods and this fire, I've been here thirty-five years and I may not make it. So, the HTID was also formed so that all the small lodging properties would have a voice in the marketing here. If you eliminate it, we won't have a voice because we don't have budget for this. And the larger properties that are focused on certain segments of the visitors will have their marketing budgets and continue to market Healdsburg, but only to certain types of visitors. And a lot of us smaller properties will not be represented in that. So, you know, I support the HTID. I hope that you do not make it down to one year because that would be a very unwise business move. So five years at least. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Um, okay, I was here in September. I am here today. I guess I gotta come back again. That's a lot of time taken on something. I don't understand why it's even under discussion. First of all, I just want to let you know that Healdsburg Jazz Festival and jazz musicians are doing their part and, uh, put down in a benefit to support Corazon Healdsburg and the important work they're doing on the fire recovery. They, they also work with undocumented and documented Latinos and helping them get, uh, back on their feet. Um, as far as this money that we're talking about, I'm, I have a different impression. Um, it's, uh, like three hundred and eighty thousand dollars is the marketing budget. But about two hundred and sixty thousand of that is for print and digital. I have to say, that's absolutely nothing in a year's budget. Absolutely nothing. The Jazz Festival, I said almost a hundred thousand dollar budget between its cash spend and its in-kind trades. It's, I, I, I can't understand why this is even a question. It's like a, I don't understand. I, I really don't. I, it's, it's such a time, uh, sink for all of us to keep coming here, to keep trying to, and we all know the answer already. So I, I just hope that, uh, you think about even, you know, making the, uh, the, uh, percentage bigger. I mean, we need it. We needed it in September. We need it more now. And the businesses exist by, uh, promotion. So, um, I'm for it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ariel Kelly and I'm the board chair of Corazon Healdsburg. I'm here to speak on behalf of Corazon with regard to the HTID. This is a very complex issue. And I think that prior to the fires, uh, there was a lot of concern regarding tourism being, going down a path that, that residents were concerned was impeding their ability to have a, a quality of life in our community. And quickly after the fires, we realized that many of the residents in our community, many residents that Corazon serves, who work in the hospitality industry, who work in hotels, who work in restaurants, um, were getting either laid off or were losing shifts based on the incredibly steep decline of what was happening in tourism, in restaurants, um, immediately following the, the fires. And it has not picked up. There are still restaurants that are empty during midweek and that means that they don't need extra shift work. And so feed people who've been working in their kitchens or cleaning hotel rooms, if that hotel room isn't dirty, if no one's sleeping in that room, that housekeeper does not need to go in and clean it. And if a restaurant only has two reservations in one night, then they tell people to go home. And that's money that they cannot make to support their families, to pay rent, to live in our community. And that impact has a huge, huge bearing on the Latino population of Healdsburg and the surrounding areas and the people that work in our community. And for people who were living on the margin of just getting by, who were hoping to be able to get into new housing or be able to finally move out of their parents' apartment that they were hoping to do. And as many, you know, forty-something-year-old adults, they don't want to be living at home with their parents. Um, but that's their, that's what's going on right now. People are living three to four families to one home because that's our housing crisis. And what has happened with the fires has exacerbated- And what has happened with the fires has exacerbated this economic divide in our community to a level that is not sustainable. And we are seeing people who are leaving our community, who have lived here for years, who just said, you know what? This is it. I can't afford to live here. I can't afford to raise my kids here. We're moving. And the HTID and the marketing dollars that the HTID is able to spend to attract the right type of tourists to our community, I don't mean rich tourists. I mean tourists that are going to come here and sleep in our hotels, that are going to spend more than just an afternoon drinking in our plaza, but who are going to invest in really seeing our town for what it is. Attend events, attend, you know, the arts, go to restaurants, sleep in our hotel beds, create that TOT revenue that funds our parks and rec department. Those are the tourists we want. Windsor's building a Holiday Inn across the street from the other Holiday Inn. Those tourists are going there. They have the hotel beds. And you know what those folks do? They sleep in Windsor, they pay their TOT in Windsor, and then they come here, park on our plaza, get drunk, and go back to Windsor. And that's not the kind of tourists that we want for our community and for our HTID to be able to design the marketing message of how they want tourists to come to our community. I'm wrapping up. That is what we're looking to do and that's what this HTID can fund, is the right message to get people who will come and appreciate our town and spend several nights here. And I urge you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Denny, good to see you in here.
Good evening, folks. Denny Drouty. I am not a business owner, I'm just a resident. And I applaud all the business owners who stood up and I applaud their concerns. I share them with them. I support their interest for this program. But additionally, if we don't have people coming to these hotels, these lodges, the way I look at it, the greater problem is going to be the quality of this community that goes down with the restaurants. Most of the TOT goes to community service money. Supports the senior center, supports our parks, supports the skateboard park. So in my view, unless I'm missing something, if we don't get people in these hotels, the problem won't be just our restaurants. It'll be Mark Thieming's department as a whole not having money to support itself. We've grown the TOT forty-eight percent over the last four years. It's allowed that department to grow and do great things for this community. Are we going to sustain that with what's just happened? I question that. And so Mark's going to possibly have some difficult decisions on behalf of the city. But I hope not. I hope we can continue this. But we need to get people in these hotels and this seems to me to be a very clear and simple issue that we've got to support this and get people in here and try and sustain the basic infrastructure of our city that the community services supports. So I hope you think long and hard about the whole community along with our dear, dear restaurant friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, welcome.
Hello, it's Mark McMullin and I have a couple of handouts I want to give you. So those handouts are copies of what I saw in the San Francisco Chronicle on Sunday. One of them is an ad for Sonoma County. The other is an ad very specifically for Heelsburg. And that was from HTID. That is a very quick response to try and get people from San Francisco to come up here. I am very much in support of the HTID and I would like for the city to look and see how much audit, how much it really costs to administer the two percent tax that is on top of the fourteen percent tax. Because I think that maybe it's a little less than what the city is collecting and that money could be moved over to the actual HTID, sales and marketing area. So anyway, I'm very much in support of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rosie, welcome.
Hi, Rosie Fabian, Sherman Street. I would, I would say it's probably time for us to go ahead with this. If we need to make it a year or five years, that's great. I trust Brian. I respect him immensely. I respect all of you immensely and the staff. As a former subcontractor for the Park and Rec Department here through BI, I know the struggles we had then. I don't want to see anything going forward get worse. It's important for our businesses and we have to remember that the money that we do get from this comes back to us and then some. It comes back into our community. So we aren't just throwing money into a hole. This is money that comes right back to us and then some. It's a profitable endeavor and I would highly recommend going ahead with this as quickly as possible and moving on to the next manner of business, which is rebuilding, you know, Sonoma County. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, welcome.
My name's Mark Luzaj. I grew up in Sonoma County. I've been here all about four of my years, nineteen sixty-seven in Santa Rosa. It took me till my entire life to get to this town, okay? I watched, I used to pick prunes off Gurnville Road. I used to, you never even wanted to say you wanted, you lived in Windsor, there was a time when it was like that, and this was a little hit town, okay? I've watched so many changes here, but this is a magical place, you guys. I don't, I don't think anybody debates that here yet. And what drew my wife and I here two and a half years ago was the people, okay? They, my neighbors are in this room and they welcomed me before I bought my house. They came down and interrupted me with our broker on the sidewalk and said, hey, are you guys going to buy this house? Because if you're, anyways, just come tell us about it. We're going to be sitting down here on the porch. And they invited us to come down before we even knew them. Okay, this was like stepping back in time forty years. That's what it's like here. I know all my neighbors up and down both sides of the street. I lived in Windsor twenty years. I didn't, it wasn't like that. The other part that's magical about Heelsburg is everybody knows this is vibrant atmosphere. Okay, that comes from tourists that are coming here to have a, you know, come to the wine country. This is a special place. You can't recreate this. People have tried. What we have here is something, it's a one of a kind. It really is. I think it's a foregone conclusion tonight that messing with the HTID would be a monumental disaster. And these are our friends and neighbors on both sides of the issues and this is the community here, okay? Any radical change to the HTID is going to affect everybody, big and small, rich and poor, all of them, okay? If we want to make changes over time, we do that stuff slow, okay? We want to shift funds into taking it out of marketing when we really think we can afford it, fine. We don't have to bicker and fight about that. We do it responsibly, a little bit at a time. We don't take something that's radically successful and make this just tremendous shocking change to it. We can't do that. We expect you and I, you know, I don't even have to implore you. You can see it on your faces. It's serious. What happened on October eighth and ninth is like nothing anybody's ever experienced in their life. Whoever, who knows what a firestorm is? I can't even process that, okay? And I work in the water industry and I'm rebuilding water systems all around here, man. It's a disaster out there, okay? Bennett Ridge, I'm building a new water system for those guys and hundred and ten out of a hundred and forty houses, they're gone. It's the same up in Marqua Springs Road and Fountain Grove. It's unbelievable what's happening. And what we heard tonight is true, man. The national media painted this as a place you don't want to go. And we all know that's not true. It's a magical place. Now's not the time to play around with, and I, let me take that back.
Or could you wrap it up?
Yeah, now's not the time, and I support a hundred percent staying on with the HTID. I think the only question is, and I'd implore you to really think about even taking part of it, that twenty percent that was going to go to community projects, maybe put that off for a couple of years and get us back on track, okay? And then when things are good again and back to normal, we approach that subject together. We don't have to argue about it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Tim, welcome back.
I'm coming here without my notebook. I'm going to be flying by the seat of my pants on this one. I was prepared to make a different statement and I think that being nimble and flexible in light of what's put before us in terms of any business is important. I would suggest thinking about looking at the aggregate amount of money that's dedicated towards the proposal on the HTID and front-loading it for a shorter period of time. Putting in some well-designed metrics to see how the performance of the business industry responds to that increased marketing and adjust accordingly down the road rather than business as usual, plug in the HTID just the way it is. I think this is a situation where we need concentrated effort and a significant supercharging to the, to the marketing effort. But I, I'm not sure it needs to be for as long as is proposed. Brian mentioned that he thinks it's going to take about a year for things to turn around. Maybe instead of five years, this is three years. But it's front-loaded, so you're spending more money upfront so you can get better placement, better positioning, better response from the market to try to help really kickstart and jumpstart this thing so we don't lose momentum. We're starting to see little, little signs of things coming back, but it's not coming back fast enough. The fact that you've got another three hundred hotel rooms coming in down on Dry Creek Road and Wasagio Hills and everything else that's been approved, just imagine what it's going to take in order to put heads in beds for that increased number. So we really need to have a concerted, focused, supercharged marketing effort here. There's a way to do the math smartly and get the right result at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn, welcome.
Good evening, Marilyn Joyce. So we've heard a lot tonight, a lot of emotional input. And I'm emotional too. I, I really like that this is a tourist town. And I think that we need to be smart, talking about the metrics. Someone said we need to ask the questions and get the answers. I totally agree. Two words, and that's climate change. Fires, floods, crop failure, insects that come from a more tropical area. These are all things that Heelsburg is vulnerable to unless we diversify our economy. And I'm not saying to do this or that with the HTID. I think that, I think we need to get those questions out there and we need to get answers from people who have more expertise than we do. And if that means that we apply for this ESTAT, the Sustainable Assistance Design Team of impartial experts, of economists, planners, architects, landscape architects, et cetera, to give us an idea of, I mean, they, they gave us a blueprint for, for a tourism town. That's where it came from. That was in nineteen eighty-two, that's thirty-five years ago, of Heelsburg looking towards building what we have now as a success. We don't want it to be vulnerable. We don't want one fire to decimate the whole economy. So I would say let's, let's get down to the basics and really do ask some of those questions. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else before I close the public hearing? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to counsel for discussion. First of all, does anybody have any questions or anything that, for clarification on this? I think that there are a number of knobs, I think, that could be turned tonight within a certain limitation, you know, the term, the initial makeup of what's shown as the, as the different categories within fifteen percent, the percentage, and there were some others, I think, too, right? Can you correct me if I'm wrong here?
No, and I, I wanted to clarify, people were referring to the ninety thousand dollar number Alan you mentioned a couple of times. Just wanted to clarify, the reason I was making that point is, you know, that's what's being proposed from the HTID is that on an annual basis, fifteen percent of the total budget can be allocated. However, and I wanted to, kind of the reason to say that is, right now, as proposed, sixty percent of the total is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars is going towards sales and marketing with a hundred and twenty thousand or twenty percent going to district development. Now, if we, just quick math, if we take away ninety thousand dollars from sales and marketing, that's really depleting that by twenty-four percent. So I just wanted to kind of show that, you know, that, yeah, the fifteen percent that can be shifted around, it's actually a pretty substantial amount. So that was, you know, I wanted to make sure that that was clear, that that was the reason I was pointing that out. It's not to quibble over the ninety thousand, but I just wanted to make everybody up here aware that that's a pretty big chunk that can be shifted around. And I have a couple of comments, is that okay if I just keep it there?
Yeah, yeah, I just, but I just wanted to kind of just talk about, you know, so tonight we're here to take public comment and we've certainly done that. And we're also here to make a decision about either going forward with this or not going forward with this, what the term is, and also what the percentage of allocations towards sales and marketing or district development is, knowing that, you know, that could change in the future by plus or minus fifteen percent year to year. So I just, I would just ask, I guess, in your comments to kind of include those items so that we can...
So if I could just clarify one thing you said, Mayor. I don't think tonight we're asking to move forward this or not. This is to take public hearing, public comment, and if you have suggestions, be able to provide those to staff. But maybe I misunderstood. I thought you mentioned to move forward or not, and that was not part of it.
Right, I mean, I'm just saying that the, I mean, the ultimate goal of this is to, you know, kind of come together as a consensus on those things which can still be changed. And, you know, we have another public hearing on this in two weeks, so it's just nice to know about those things that we can change about the plan, what we all think about them in our comments. Does that make sense?
Okay. So, okay, so I support it. Right now, I still want to hear more public comment at the next meeting, but I, I do think this is a very important part of the business community. As far as term, for me personally, I'm fine with the tenure term and I'll tell you why. This has been a year-long process of multiple meetings. I think somebody said this is, I forgot your name from the Jazz Festival. Sorry. You know, it's true that people are working nights, they're busy, and I think there's a lot can be, that can be done within that tenure term. There's some things here with the shifting of the allocations and whatnot that I don't think we need to reopen this up, you know, every year, every... you know, every year, every two years. So that, and again, this is why we have five council members, I'm just sharing my thoughts, that I think it's better to have a tenure term. And then, you know, we do have these annual reviews, and I think that's a perfect opportunity where we could have a shorter timeframe where we get the public feedback, both positive or negative, what direction we want to go. Hey, I don't like that you focused on this side, focus more on this. You can get some of that input, and every impression that I've had from Brian is that they are listening and trying to figure out, okay, how do we market better, more focused? In terms of the allocations, you asked a question about the allocations, and my thoughts are, a couple of speakers mentioned this, right now, the HTID has provided 20% to go toward the district development. And I do think, not I do think, but I'm pretty sure that the marketing efforts from Napa, from, you know, the Central Valley, but the coast, other wine countries, they are doing everything they can to steal people that wouldn't come here. And so I would almost, you know, if it's a five-year term, 10-year term, I would almost have, maybe for the initial couple of years, having that 20% reduced down. So it's all going toward marketing would be kind of the way I would approach it, so that we can generate that revenue to then, you know, because ultimately, the TOT, it does come back to the community. So it's not, you know, this is a good thing. We have hotels that are in place or coming online, we need to get people in there. It's going to keep people from, you know, as Arielle said, driving up here and parking. You have a parking problem. They're staying in the hotels. Now they're spending their money while their car is sick. So term, I prefer 10 years, and then we've got these, you know, review periods. allocations, I would do, you know, at least for the first year or two, just do it all in sales and marketing, and then jump to 20%, would be my thought. And then I have some other comments, but for now, I think that's kind of what you were asking about.
Yeah. Councilmember Gold?
Well, first, I just want to assure everybody that everybody here on the dais is very, very interested in the continued health and prosperity of our tourist-facing businesses. And we've already indicated our interest in continuing the HTID, or we wouldn't be having these discussions. So it is just a matter of discussing, you know, terms and the management plan, that kind of thing. I think 10 years is too long. It's too difficult to predict what we're going to want to do that far in the future. I think five years is a time period that I'm comfortable with. I really, I like the idea of a council member being a regular participant in HTID discussions and having, you know, more input and closer relationship with that process. I would request that in order to be better partners, perhaps the lodging industry would share with us their occupancy rates. Because that's sort of a metric that we can really use and kind of to gauge the relative health of at least that aspect of our tourism business. With regard to other issues, I would like to see perhaps a different structuring of the city's administration fee and the other administration and operations fee, something that's based more on actual costs instead of a percentage. And I would hope that that might shake up a little bit more money for other aspects of the project. And then, when it comes to allocation, I was pretty excited about the district development funds and the things that we could do for that, with that money that would benefit both visitors and the residents. You know, at the event the other night, people were talking about bathrooms in the parks. That's a great idea, and that's something we could do. Parking improvements, sidewalk improvements, bicycling, safety improvements, all of that are approved uses for HTID funds. So I'm not, you know, really ready to let go of that dream at this point. I do think that, you know, we have a strong economy, a strong tourism economy. That's why these hotels are so eager to come here, and there's a lot of business to be had and a lot of interest in Healdsburg, in part because of the successful efforts of the HTID over the past five years. I'm well aware of that. So I basically feel that I definitely, I can see that we do need to counteract some of the negative images that have been in the media, and that we do need to be especially aggressive with our marketing in this coming year. Obviously, it's not all on the HTID. Sonoma County Tourism is going to be putting a lot of funds towards that as well and individual businesses. So I would, you know, ultimately like to get to the point where, you know, we shrink down the administrative costs a little bit and then split the rest 50-50. I think that would be fair and a use that would be probably adequate to ongoing promotional needs. So I would think that would be my ultimate goal, but with a higher percentage for the coming year because of our special circumstances for sales and marketing.
Thank you. Councilmember Neokas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to echo Councilmember Gold's assertion that this isn't a question, we wouldn't be here. We wouldn't be here if we didn't agree long ago that we supported, right? So I want that to be very clear to the audience and to the, and to our voters. This is something that we all feel very strongly about. It's not a question of either or, it's a question of how, right? And it's a question, it's not a black and white question, it's a color question, it's a nuanced question. And that's why we get paid the big bucks. So with that being said, I also want to point out that this, there's kind of this false dichotomy of the district improvements versus the sales and marketing. I want to, it's a Healdsburg Tourism Improvement District. So minus the administrative costs, the rest of it, which is at this point 85%, I propose it even go higher, and I'll talk about that, goes to improving the tourism, the tourist district. It goes to improving towards the 85% minimum goes to improving tourism. I'm the coder guy, I'm looking at the code. I'm looking at page six of the proposal, District Development. District Development Projects will be designed to improve the visitor experience in an effort to increase overnight visitation at assessed lodging businesses. It's not just, that's just when I was taking it for, because we want to. The whole point is increase overnight visitors at assessed lodging businesses. So let's be really clear about what, about these proportions. That being said, I want to be, I want also to express my excitement, really, at how the district has responded to the community's concerns. I think this is a really creative, thoughtful proposal that attempts to strike that balance. And it's a way that, you know, we kind of, it's a beautiful kind of, well, beautiful is a wrong term, but it's an impressive way of, to me, a demonstration of how public-private partnership can work, right? We say, "We've got these concerns." The private industry comes back and says, "Okay, we'll take your concerns and we'll respond to them." And here's a thoughtful way of doing it. So I commend you all for having that, for spending the time, really on all sides. It's not the tourism, lodging industry, the tourism industry, but also the community itself for having these really constructive, meaningful conversations. So I'm really excited that we're having this, that the quality of the conversation has really up its game. So now, that all being said, so, you know, when I'm looking at this, I'm thinking in terms of, if you think about a graph, right? For me, it's, my goal is to, is if we have this line of community satisfaction, it's constantly going straight, constantly continually going straight up. Community is not, it's the businesses, it's the small businesses, it's the taxpayers, it's the residents. It's the community, community satisfaction is my goal. So, now into some specifics. I think I do have some questions about what is reasonable for a cap of the admin fees. I think there, at some point, how much does a city really spend on administering the tax, right? How much does the council really spend on doing their part, right? So I would like to hear, you know, some feedback from the city and the chamber about, you know, what would be some reasonable, instead of just doing a straight percentage, let's talk about, you know, capping it at some point so that the rest can go into the district, okay? So that would be my first one specific. Councilmember Gold, I like your idea about data, and that's actually something I was thinking about, and you reminded me about it. You know, data, that's how we, one of the constant comments of last Wednesday's community conversation, use data in every, data-driven decision-making, right? Yeah, I love to have specific data. And by also insensitive to the, you know, proprietary information of the businesses. So I'm wondering if there's any sort of way that, and this being a public entity, there might be some real tension there about how much we can, you know, share, how much data we can share that would not become public. So it would be interesting to see if there's any way that we can have some sort of balance where maybe the data goes only, there's a closed session to review specific data, maybe. That would be interesting to me. As far as, as far as the percentage, this, you know, 20 versus 60, you know, again, 20% is district development. One of the line items for the district development would be to help promote events, right? So, yeah, we could have, there are all kinds of great events, the Jazz Fest is a perfect example, where the district could help to promote that event and bring heads into beds for the duration of that, of the, for the Jazz Fest. And we're all benefiting from it, that's the whole point, is that it's benefiting both sides, right? So I don't know, I think I would just, and let's play a mind game, a mental game. What if, what if the fires happened after we made, we approved this proposal, right? A proposal like this is designed to be flexible, right? It's designed to be able to say, hmm, well, something happened, let's see what we can do to respond. And I'm looking at the way that it's designed, you know, yeah, there's 20% of district improvement, district development, but that district development could be, at any given moment, without going to the city council approval, be adjusted to say, ooh, we need to do more on promoting events. So I don't know, I think it's, to me, leaving the agreement in place as is, is, to me, would be a testament to its flexibility and for its ways to adapt to changes. What, who knows what might happen, earthquake might happen in four months, God forbid. How's the planning going to respond to that, right? And then finally, as far as a timing, here's my gauntlet. We have another tax that's coming up for renewal fairly soon, that's the Measure B tax, right? It's coming up for renewal on December 31st, 2023, which would be a six years, basically six years from now, right? So I'm proposing that, well, so just a little bit more Measure B. We all know that this is a big deal and that we really need to have some serious thought as a community about what to do with that Measure B tax, right? I'd like to propose that we keep this, do the six-year term on the HTID as well, so that it kind of keeps us focused. I personally would rather have these conversations about what to do with these taxes before the six-year term is over, but let's just say, let's keep it the same deadline so that it's really very front and center. We've got these two things, these two questions that are coming up at the same time. Let's talk about these, and let's have a deeper conversation about maybe how, maybe, maybe we could come up with a way and because of the way that this is, this argument, this agreement is flexible and responsive to the community, the community itself might say, yeah, this is great, how we've been working is great, let's codify it permanently. Maybe that, maybe if we could, if the community says and sees the benefit from that, that's my, that's kind of my gauntlet that I'll throw down, so that we can, I'm not saying we are making it permanent, I'm saying by having those conversations coming up at the same time, we can have those, we can start talking about, you know, wow, okay, HTID, show me how you can, how this could really make that line keep on going straight so that, so it's a bit of a challenge, I guess, is what I'm saying, to the HTID, to make this agreement work in everybody's, in everybody's benefit. So, thanks.
Thank you. Vice President Rentsel?
I'm going to try to be succinct, so, you know, certainly understand everybody's very concerned about my understandings and non-understandings about business, but I really hear your frustration and your interest in making sure you don't have to come to another meeting and ask questions or answer questions. But that's the way I learned, so I'm just letting you know. I appreciate you answering my questions and helping me understand some of the aspects that Robert Eiler's study didn't demonstrate to me in terms of what I needed before I could vote. And so one thing that's really clear, and I want to talk to my colleagues, and you get to watch this, is we have certain community, or excuse me, council goals. And our goal in March was to seek a balance with commercial tourism growth with quality of life and more closely aligned with our community values. Formulate an economic development strategy that seeks to further diversify the city's economic base, attracts different types of businesses to Healdsburg, expands opportunities for new and expanding businesses, and provides enhanced business support services. Over to the side, this is on the poster over here that's been printed. It did say, "Prepare a study that assesses the benefits and impacts of the tourism sector." Okay, we got that from Robert Eiler, HTID paid the city back for that study. So we did get, and you all remember, a study about the economic aspects. But here's where I am concerned and wondering, as an elected, because that's what I am. I'm here to represent not just you, but the people that live here. There's three stools, someone in here has pointed that out to me. And we have businesses, and we have residents, and then we have an economy that's swirling around all of us. And what I think I need is more information than what's been given to me tonight. And I don't mean numbers and percentages, but actually looking at what we talked about when we went out and tried to get a study to see the impacts on the tourism sector. So I do think that it's important that we continue to talk about livability, and we talk about it not just from the business standpoint, but from the people that live here. And some of you I know clearly live here, and you have a lot of passion about living here. Some of you are my neighbors, I see you on the streets, you drive past me. We're all familiar with each other, there's no us and them, and I know it feels that way because you have to be here until 8:30 tonight, listening to the public people tell you about your economics. But I do have responsibilities, so one of the things I need is more about an understanding of how it's working. I want to know the number of rooms in Healdsburg, I want to know the percentage of occupancy rates. I think that's a viable thing to know, and that's not about, I won't vote until I get that. I just think that's a reasonable issue. I've never been able to find what we actually have. If we do in fact have a problem attracting tourists, why are we building hotels in this town? If we don't have developers that are interested, why do we have people coming to this town that want to develop restaurants on our plaza and also develop hotels? That's a question, it's not an academic debate question, it's a good question. If it's bad, I want to know why we still have people coming in. If it's because they already have enough money to survive without making money, which is a whole nother issue, then what is the sustainability for some of you small business people? Could we direct some of the marketing money to the local businesses or the people that literally are living here or have one wine tasting room or one boutique? Could we specialize and actually create a way to help the people that need it most? That's just something I'm wondering, and I know the taste makers looks really good. And again, I don't know your life, I just know there seems to be a question of reflection here. What is sustainable tourism? Some people don't know how to approach that. There was a Sustainable Tourism Forum on May 31st that I attended. I did get some information, I went Wednesday night. I'm trying to understand more than just from a business perspective, because when we advertise Healdsburg, when we put it out there, and I do know the origins of the HTID, I've talked to Mo Malkaroy, who was here when she was doing the chamber, I know that it was to differentiate the market from Sonoma County. Healdsburg isn't Sonoma County right now. Sonoma County, parts of Sonoma County were severely injured by fire flames. We are really fortunate. There are different marketing strategies, I know some people have already done, I've seen them on social media. My concern is the smaller businesses in town, the local businesses that have families that we heard from tonight. I just need more information before I vote on how we are marketing to create sustainable livability, whatever the terms you want to use, that makes Healdsburg ironically the very thing people want to come visit. If you get, if you get what I'm, I mean, I heard everybody talking about, this is a special place, it's one of a kind, this is an amazing place, we can bring people up here, they buy, you know, they come up as visitors, they buy a place, they get a second home, and they move to become our next-door neighbors. None of that is negative, obviously, but we do have a viability issue. So as a council, we have goals, and we have things that we said we valued when we put forth, for example, a question to our city manager to go out and find a tourism study that isn't about just the numbers, but the impacts on livability. So we use the umbrella livability, which I thought was a more neutral term as a semantics-focused. I just thought it was a good idea, and I was glad to get the input. But I just have a concern, and I really don't want to even talk about five, 10 years right now, I don't. I know that we care about it, I just, I don't know why I even have to say that. Why would I be here if I didn't believe that everybody deserves a... Why would I be here if I didn't believe that everybody deserves a right to make money in this town and create and continue to do good food and good hotels and make everybody really feel good about their economic viability? If you don't believe that, I, I don't know what to do, except to just tell you, I'm trying my best. I do think principles are important, and I do think I needed more information. So my concern is, we talk about getting this, this study, we didn't get it. We had one night up at the villa, we listened to people's concerns, they didn't really have a focus on tourism, but that's okay, it was livability. And I just don't know what to say, other than I'm not comfortable tonight voting on five or ten years. So if we get into numbers like that, I can't go there. I want to stay engaged, I want to stay informed, and I'm very impressed with what the HTID boards come up with as far as modifying things and shifting things pre-fire, because I think these are the same numbers pre-fire. But I also am concerned about the fire being the, the issue without knowing more about the long-term effects of it, because Heelsburg doesn't have the same experience that some of the other areas have. So I, naive as you may consider me, I'm just suggesting that I need more information before I can go forward with a five- or ten-year plan to just, you know, and mirror it with the Measure V. The economic development plan that we talked about talks about a tourism growth study, and it talks about things that help us understand when we advertise Heelsburg, how does that impact livability? And I know it's definitely tonight, an audience of business people that really care about this livability. But I also think that it's important that we keep the big picture in mind, and no one is against tourism as much as we want to make sure it's viable and sustainable. So Mayor, I, I don't think my tone right now is going to be allowing me to go numbers at all. I do like the idea of the administration being cut or cost-effective and figure out what it really is. I liked the input on the nimbleness of the economy. I like that idea of actually maybe just front-loading a lot of money right now and seeing that that would help. But I'm having a hard time wanting to say five or ten years tonight. And I just feel like our, our position has to mirror what we said we valued, which is to look at other things to see how it impacts. But I'm for the HTID being renewed, I just can't necessarily say it's five or ten years right now. And that's kind of what I have to say about my response to this very powerful night tonight. Thank you.
No problem, it's, it's all good. So I initially wasn't in support of this, many of you know, because it was all marketing, and I really like this plan. I, I like the district development, I think it opens up a lot of possibilities for issues that residents are concerned about, as well as business owners. I would be in favor of five, six, or ten years, depending on what we can come up with, I guess that's going to happen at a future meeting. And also, I would, I would favor front-loading, if we call it that. I, I would, I would favor moving fifteen percent from the sales and, from the district development to sales and marketing, to, to start off with the expectation that that would move back at some point. And I would also support, you know, fixing the city admin fees, as well as the administration that the chamber does. And also, you know, maybe some of that district development money could go to other organizations that bring lots of people to town, like, you know, the Jazz Festival, the Art Coalition of the Arts, the Prune Packers, things like that, that, you know, especially things that would be off-season or would be in the middle of the week, maybe when, when things are less, when the occupancy numbers are less. I think that there's, you know, in talking to a lot of people about this issue, you know, you, you get to know what other cities do and other counties do and, and kind of how they operate. And I think that there was one city, I can't remember which one it was, but they only put their money towards off-peak marketing, which is during the week, in the winter, stuff like that. So that, you know, it, it brings, it brings stability to, in people that are employed. It brings stability to the restaurants and all the other businesses that are boutiques and whatever else that, that benefit from that. And I think that's our goal here, right, is to have a, a stable, successful business community that, in the time that I've been here, has amazing contributions to, you know, a lot of the nonprofit organizations and events that, that we, we see around us. And so, I, I think that, you know, going to the next step would be a wise thing, and I think it looks like the... Do you have a question?
Yeah. So the comment about the actual fees, because I, I think that makes sense, that instead of a percentage, should be closer, some kind of actual with maybe a little contingency. And so hopefully at the next meeting, there can be a little report on, hey, the chamber is this, and the, and the, the city is this kind of ballparking. And I'm sure it's buried in here somewhere, but I don't see it right here, so.
Yeah, so that was something that the Assistant City Manager mentioned, and also Brian with the HTID board, so. I mean, I think that's, and we've seen that echoed here, I think all of us talked about that, so.
I mean, look, don't we have numbers that we can actually look at from previous years, since this has been going on for five years? In terms of what the city actually spends time and cost-effectiveness or cost use, and then do the same thing with the chamber? I know they're the HOA, so to speak, but just curious, like, how much does it actually cost to do the administrative work? Can't we look at that and just kind of assess it? I mean, HTID could probably do that, too.
I'm sure the staff could, could do that.
And then, is it possible to find out occupancy rate, or is that not something that we should borrow, get involved in?
I think Council member, Council member Neokas had a very good point about that, is that it's a balance between having the data and proprietary information that businesses kind of hold as part of their, you know, intellectual property, so to speak, so.
Legally sound, as city attorney, that you, we don't, we don't ever get to know what percentage your occupancy is, it's kind of a private matter?
So the survey, there's a county-wide survey that's done by Smith Travel Research, which can give you an occupancy rate for Sonoma County. They don't drill down to, to the city of Heelsburg, so we'd have to go out and probably survey through that process. But to my understanding, to my knowledge, we don't, there's not a specific city of Heelsburg occupancy survey.
So I guess, so with this item, I guess we can consider the, the, the public testimony received, and we'll move on based on our comments to the next meeting, which will happen two weeks from today in these chambers, so thank you very much. And we shall move on to Item Eight-B, Professional Services Agreement with GHD Incorporated for the Heelsburg Avenue Improvement Project.
Two minutes?
Yeah, with a two-minute, two-minute break for...
With open gov until finalized June. And so Liz is thinking that the final adjustments for June will be in by the end of this year. Yes, and so as soon as those get in, and they get, because each time she does it, she reconciles it to the books, and then, then we can do July and, and bring it more current. Not technically, but, but except at year-end. At year-end, it's definitely a close, and that's what's holding us up right now. For a while, it happened to be the conversion, because the conversion from one software to another made it really difficult. But now that we've got that kink worked out, now it's a matter of, now we're at year-end close, it's holding us up from the current. And then once we get year-end done, then we can get caught, easily caught up. So as soon as you get the Treasury Report ready, we should be able to have open gov up. Because we don't want open gov up until the bank's been reconciled. Does that make sense? But no, we don't have a formal month-to-month close. But, but, but open gov is, open gov is a completely separate platform from our software. So.
I thought you were in the bathroom.
Yeah, no, I want, I want to understand more about what's, what, what you're thinking. Or, or what information you need that you're not going to have. I look forward to that.
All right, we're, it looks like we're getting back in the swing of things here, gentlemen, welcome. So we're, we're, just to, just to bring us back to the thing here, we're, we're on Item Eight-B, the Professional Services Agreement with GHD Incorporated for the Heelsburg Avenue Improvement Project. Director Salmy, take it away.
Principal Engineer Mario Landeros will present this item.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor McCaffrey, members of the city council. The item before you at this time concerns a contract for construction management of the Heelsburg Avenue Roundabout Project. The recommendation being presented for you tonight is adoption of a resolution approving a professional service agreement in the not-to-exceed amount of one million, three hundred eighty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars with GHD for construction engineering services for the Heelsburg Avenue Improvement Project, as well as for authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and related amendments for an amount up to ten percent of the original contract amount, and amending the fiscal year twenty seventeen eighteen budget to fund the agreement. At this time, though, I'd like to provide you a little bit of background. Just a brief background here. So back in mid-two thousand sixteen, city hired GHD to, for, for construction management, inspection, and public outreach, as well as other construction engineering services for the Roundabout Project. At that time, the scope of services that were contemplated would use a full-time inspector on the project, as well as a construction manager at halftime with administrative support about a quarter, quarter time, and as well as other construction engineering support services. But in addition, there was also a local firm involved for public outreach, as well as other subconsultants for geotechnical support and testing. Now, that original contract, one point three-four million dollars, was based on providing those services through the original completion date of the project, being August twenty seventeen. And now it's significant to note that the, the project contractor, Bay Cities Pavement Engraving, developed and then they subsequently controlled, and, and they're still controlling their construction schedule. It was initially based on its scheduling assumptions. And this is something that, you know, quite frankly, is typical with all bidders. They assume certain things to formulate their, their unique bids and their scheduling. Unfortunately, it's become all apparent that really most of their assumptions weren't realized during construction. And the, this has resulted in really no small part in delaying the, the completion of the work. And furthermore, there are continuing efforts to shift risk and responsibility due to so many other issues that, that have also impacted the, the schedule. Quick, brief look at some of these construction issues that have caused impacts to the schedule include issues such as the, the handling of the soil, developing a soil plan, groundwater recovery, control, and treatment. Also, the deep sewer construction, which is part of the project, of course, it's had, they've had many complications with the shoring systems used. And some of you may recall, this last wet weather season was longer than, than, than normal, which further complicated the project. We had to deal with a very antiquated utility system. A lot of it was unrecorded, and we basically found it as we went along and needed to, to deal with it. And, and this sort of thing, these sorts of things kept leading to, to these continuous extensive claims for, for change conditions. Also, the contractors' means and methods of prosecuting the work quite likely led some of these extensive issues to the public, public facilities. As you can see, for example, we've had a couple of sewer collapses, a couple of incidents of damage to a twelve-kV electrical line, as well as the condition of Heelsburg Avenue and some of the other street sections have been compromised. And as a result, the contractor at this time is projecting a completion date into July of twenty eighteen. So on the issue of extending a GHD contract, you know, we want to look at, again, looking at the original contract agreement. The services that were a part of that have, have been performed and are continuing to this very day to be, to be performed. However, we are dealing with now, due to the issues previously mentioned, a greater level of effort on these tasks than anticipated. Also, due to the duration, the extended duration, these services are continuing for a lot longer than originally planned. And then the applied resources demand have increased drastically due to all the construction challenges we faced. Our construction managers, which initially was at a halftime, has gone to essentially full-time, in many cases, eight to ten hours daily. Our full-time inspector is still operating, but almost from the start of the work, has been working ten to twelve... been working 10 to 12 hours again daily. It's been pretty excessive. There will be an increase in the activities to update the plans. In part, this is due to some of the initial scope and reductions, modifications that were done at the time of bid award, which was done to for 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 cost savings initially, but also to reflect the conditions discovered as we've gone along and changes that have been been made all along. Other issues that have intensified has been the public outreach. Example of that is extended merchant signage programs and those are continuing on to this very day, adding more signs, requests for more signs and so forth. And again, with all these issues, there has been an increase in analysis for potential claims, no small part of of the services. So as we go forward, looking at the at the financial challenges with extending such contract, we we have looked into a a contract agreement that would essentially reduce some of GHD services while increasing city participation on the project. Some of these include that the city would take over the majority of public outreach. Public Works would assume inspection going forward after the first of the year, as well as a more active involvement from the city engineering staff on construction management. However, we also want to identify the alternatives to the contract, to extending the contract. And one of those, quite frankly, would be to not bring in city services, but rather keep GHD going at this higher level of service. The cost of that would be at 1.74 and it wouldn't again involve city services as laid out earlier. Another alternative would be to reject any new GHD contract, but in such case, we'd need to we'd ask for direction from the council, such as perhaps seeking a new firm to perform construction management. Likely drawback to that is the amount of time that it would take. And yet, that would have could have impacts to to construction schedules and possibly adding to more more potential claim issues. Another alternative would be to assign city staff to take on the construction management and inspection services fully, as well as public outreach. But that downside to that is that really all other services for citywide projects, capital improvement development, would 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 drastically reduce. And then, of course, we would still have to deal with some sort of contract with GHD to continue providing some level of of engineering support as well as a subsequent as-built blue plant group plan updates, excuse me. So brief, but that concludes my presentation. In the audience tonight, I have members of GHD, I have Principal Bill Silva behind me, as well as a construction manager, Jim Winter, and as well as staff available for questions.
Thank you, Mario. Are there questions from council? Joe, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. So I think my real, I guess, two questions. First of all, we you mentioned the the variances or the the difficulties that have been faced through essentially three categories. If I'm understanding correctly, we've got the complexity of the project and the fact that we've it's it's, you know, deep underground with the the infrastructure that's old. So it so we've got that kind of variable, right? Another variable being the weather, that we had a super rainy season. And the third variable being, to put it nicely, contractors' methods and means, right? So I guess I I like to know that we are kind of tracking those variances so we can have an understanding of the impact of weather and the impact of the of the of the aging infrastructure and the impact of the methods and means. So that, I mean, obviously, for 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 some, but but I guess I'm thinking about it in terms of longer term, the next time we do another project that involves deep underground, we have maybe some sort of metric to say, hmm, we we had this historical experience with X percent variance of of what we thought versus what was actual, and then we can apply that that metric when doing future planning and with with these old infrastructure, as it is as an as an example of how.
Well, we certainly are tracking these impacts and and I might add, so is the contractor because in process, they are very much aware of, you know, cost implications and and they have a, you know, their 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 perspective on where risk and responsibility lies in this. We have, this is not the first deep sewer project, deep utility project in Healdsburg, and and I think that GHD has had some some fairly recent experience at at deep utility construction. So these are issues that are fairly well-known. Fact estimates for scheduling in particular are based on a certain standard of care in the industry. This project had its complications. It had a contractor that experienced and keeps experiencing various challenges and it's really kind of blown a lot of these estimates out out of the water. But we certainly are are tracking and staying aware of this, as well as for what it's worth, being able to record and identify what we previously did not know of some of our antiquated utilities.
And my second question is really, you know, there's been a lot of talk in the community about how the project is way over schedule and way over budget. We all know it's way over schedule, but as far as this is actually the first time that we're actually going addressing a change to the original budget. This is the first over-budget item that we've actually had to deal with.
That is correct.
Councilmember Higley?
To kind of expand on Councilmember Neocas's comment on the how we're going to pay for it. So in the staff report, there are three categories where we're pulling the funds, gas tax funds, street development fees, sewer capacity fees, and I understand how those tie into this project because those are addressed. But when you're looking, so I just want to make sure the column to the right that I'm looking at, for example, gas tax fund, we're pulling $450,000 from that. That means there's $69,000 left in that account.
That column to the right is your remaining unappropriated fund balance. So that means that no projects were unfunded or proposed to be unfunded to use these funds and these are these are funds sitting in those funds, ready to be used for such as a project as this. And this is a very appropriate project to be using these funds for.
And how quickly does that get replenished, the gas? Do you have kind of a sense?
The gas tax is based on sales tax for gas purchases. It it'll take a while to build that back. That's kind of like a slow, a slow, steady build. The other two funds, they're development-related funds. So it all depends on on what development comes to town and and so if it's, you know, small projects, it's going to take a while. If we get some big projects coming in, it it could be quicker.
Okay.
If I could clarify one thing, I've probably already got this, but I think it's important to note, a lot of these funds, gas tax and these impact fees, we we create our CIP, our five-year CIP on it. And I think what Assistant City Manager Palitti is saying, and forgive me if you've already understood this, but none of those projects that are being funded with gas tax or any of these other funding sources are being depleted or being stopped. These are unallocated, excuse me, uncommitted funds in those categories. Again, you may have already said that, but maybe from my own brain, I need to slow it down a little bit so everybody can understand kind of where those are coming from. That doesn't mean that over the next budget process, staff will will be kind of reshuffling what those COP CIP projects are to find out what the most where the highest priorities are, but I think it's important to note, none of those adopted projects from last year are being defunded.
Okay, so just unlike the Healdsburg Avenue where it's, okay, we're going to, there's some allocated here, we don't need it right away, so we'll move it over. This is strictly unallocated funds.
That's correct.
Okay.
Question from itself?
I'm just curious, being a board member on the St. Macon County Transportation Authority, I thought that there was, didn't we have some plans for the gas taxes to do something else? Or are you familiar with that allocation as a city? We didn't have any plan to extend the bike path north with that? No? You don't know what I'm talking about?
No, I don't. I'll actually leave your question for for Mr. Salmy.
The other questions I have are more specifically, I think, for the contractor that we're going to be renewing a policy with or a a plan with. Okay, so what I want to know, I know, I think I get it, I've tried all my analogies in my head, but what I don't understand, and I have to get this in my head, is, okay, so we've had a disconnect, lots of reasons, but you're basically doing construction management. That's the job of GHD or C, G, D, I got it. Okay, so here's the problem I'm having. What have you done to actually save some money for the city? You've suggested in your letter that you're going to do something or you've been doing everything you can to mitigate costs. And I was curious because you absolutely have a doubling of design services, construction management and public outreach, certainly because it's going in through July 1st, I think. But I'm just wondering what you're going to do to reduce costs and what you're going to do to make things different than the past two years? Or has it been a year? It's been a year, right, that we started? So my question is, what are you doing differently to make things so that we are being more efficient with the money that we are spending? Because it says in the letter that that's where we're headed, is we're going to be more efficient with money. So is there anything you can tell me that would specifically address the efficiency of this money that's being spent to finish this project with GHD's responsibilities?
I'd rather have a GHD answer it, if they don't mind, it'd be just because they're the ones we're going to contract with. I mean, you can answer for them, but it would just make more sense to ask them specifically what.
That's fine.
Changes. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Bill Silva, Principal GHD. So I'll lead off. If Jim wants to add on, he can help me out. So specifically with regard to moving forward, and one of the cost-saving measures GHD is doing is removing expenses for extra hours for our main CM. And so he spends anywhere between 10 to 12 hours a day working on this project. And so we're going to make sure that we're billing only eight hours a day, even though he's working more than that. So that's one step that we're doing. And then, as you noted in the presentation, there's a number of steps that we've been working on with the city to utilize city staff to help streamline the overall cost of the project. And that's bringing on city inspection staff, as well as working with the city from a CM standpoint through Mario. So those are a few of the ways that we're working to try to reduce the cost.
Oh, also, I just want to mention that cities would be taking over essentially public outreach.
So all of it now is going to go to the city?
Yeah, just just the city is going to be the point and lead for the public outreach. And so going forward, there's $50,000 is what we've appropriated towards public outreach from GHD's side, which is local subs as well.
Part of what I'm not feeling comfortable about is we have these three groups that are these three different parties that are collaborating to get a project done. And so I understand there's been some complications with the construction company and I understand that communication has been challenging and then obviously, infrastructure has not been a smooth process to work on because of our, you know, aging infrastructure, as well as potentially looking at at our construction work and how it sometimes doesn't get done on time because of challenges. So I guess I'm just looking at what the benefit would be. When I make this decision and we're rewarding your company the contract, I need to be assured that when we start piecemealing and going out and saying, well, the city's going to do $50,000 and, you know, we're going to, we're what would, why would I want to go for it and not get you completely until the end? In other words, I want GHD to take responsibly to the bidder end when we actually have a roundabout that's functioning. So I know it's more expensive and that's part of the cutting costs that we're trying to reflect here. And I understand we're all trying to cut costs, but it's a quality issue for me and I'm wondering if the public outreach, in your opinion, is is going to be okay with that collaboration? Or is that an expertise question that you feel comfortable with as far as how we are going to articulate better with our business community and make sure that our public knows more than just a postcard image of what the, I mean, I just feel like people don't know what's going on and I'm not sure if it's because of the legal parts, I mean, we can't talk about those, but it's just frustrating, as you can imagine, to to have to ask, you know, the question over and over about what's the disconnect? And it sounds like there's a few and this is a big expenditure and so I'm just trying to understand why I would want to vote to not have you follow it all the way to the end and just do your full bull all the way to the end versus having the city come in. What do you think the advantages is of having the city come in and doing that? Would you, and in your position, can I ask that question, City Manager? What's the advantage of GHD just doing the public outreach all the way to the end versus having the cost savings and bringing the city in? Is it okay to ask them?
You can ask any question you'd like.
Okay. It's late and I just kind of feel it a lot, so I just want to make sure it's an appropriate question to ask you. As a businessman, would you want to have that? I mean, the collaboration, doesn't it take more time to collaborate? Because you have to talk to more people when you're executing communications or do you think it'll be a good collaboration with our city and you'll be able to bring that in?
I'm sure that we can work effectively with the city. One thing I want, point of clarification I want to make is that in either of the scenarios, we still have members of the public outreach team that have been on the project from the very beginning in those scenarios. So whether or not it's the lower amount or the higher amount, GHD's public outreach specialists that have been on the project all the way through will continue to be on the project. So from that standpoint, there's no concern or you shouldn't be worried about that with regard to the whether or not GHD continues to move forward on the inspection and does some of the other services. That is really up to the city's discretion, whether or not they want to have us do that or up to your discretion, whether or not you would have to have us do that. It does compartmentalize it and puts it all in one space, as you had alluded to. So that's that's one location of, say, of efficiency. But otherwise, we've been trying to do all we can to be as flexible with our services. We've been here from the very beginning on this project, as you know, the public outreach meetings that we did way back in the design phase. We're here to help see this through and make sure that you have a successful project. And so we're trying to be as effective with our flexibility as possible to make sure that you guys can package a deal to get through to a complete project.
Are you working as well for the Mill District in their process of developing the corner of the New Forest property? Are you also working on that project or?
Indirectly, yes.
And then the other question I had was just trying to understand the whole, like, decision to spend this money. I'm just really curious because my my, when I read through everything, I just thought, why not just stick with the original plan? But obviously, the plan is definitely altered because the timing is completely off. I I just wanted to make sure the public outreach was done successfully. I have a lot of confidence in the city and our communications person that we've recently hired is is going to do a great job, I'm I'm sure of it. I'm just hoping that the collaboration piece is really there and that we can assure that people know what's going on because businesses are really, as you know, they're concerned and and it's just been a long, hard process for people that are trying to literally make their money. And we just heard from the business community talking about tourism, but there's also businesses, as you know, that are really affected by this. So as long as that collaboration is really a big part of of it, I just have concerns about changing the players and then not getting the full impact of of the process success. And so one more question, and it may not be for you, so it's okay if you want to stay but, so as far as the perspective of 1.74, the $1,741,872, that that could be the whole package or we have the other option, door number one, door number two, door number three. Okay, so if we cut out and we just go the 1386, let's just round it to 1.4 million dollars. My question to the group, and maybe City Manager, I am at a turn here, but I'm just curious about other projects that we're doing, but you've already created this scenario of budget and you feel comfortable with the fiscal impact of this decision to not change too much. I'm just wondering if we should just focus on this project and not have other projects going on that take money. But it sounds like, I guess you guys feel good about the numbers. I mean, I I I'm just curious if we if we're kind of trying to do too much and we need to just do it right and focus on that and then maybe go to the North Healdsburg Avenue project that was agreed to for $450,000, which is about the difference of going full bull with this. But whatever the case, thank you. I just needed a process. It's a lot of money and it's been a very challenging part of our city's. our city's, just, it's been a challenging thing, and I just want to make sure you hear me that I appreciate all the work, but I'm also really concerned about making sure that we get good communication. That's my biggest problem with the project, is I feel like that's been a downfall, and I want to make sure it gets better. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If there's no further questions, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone here from the public who has any questions or comments on this item? Come on up, Marilyn.
Well, I'm glad we're talking about it, because a lot of people really wonder what's going on and wondering why we weren't hearing about it. I have a related comment. This project and what's gone on exposes another related and serious concern. We've been putting makeup on our roads. Measure V has paid for that, and it's not doing anything for, as far as I know, for the infrastructure underneath. So as an aging person, I can wear makeup, but I'm still aging. And our sewer lines, next to our water lines, I mean, is the sewage seeping? Who knows? I'm assuming that most of that infrastructure is aging, and it's a crisis waiting to happen, and I would like us to address it before it's a super crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Jim, come on up.
Moving the budgetary variance and covering outreach and having the city staff do some things, it's not a one-to-one dollar savings, it's a, it's a proportional savings from what's really being, what's really taking place in the budget. I actually think by doing that, it's nominal, what's being saved here. It's not really significant. The real opportunity to save, again, is to claw back that contract that was approved for the northern part of Heelsburg Avenue and park it. This is a pretty significant budgetary variance when you look at the big picture. You've got the big, big pension issue that continues to be kicked down the road. There's a lot of things going on, and the moving pieces have to be looked at before you make a decision like this.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll close the public comment and bring it back for discussion. There were a couple of questions there. Mr. Salmy, if you want to...
Vice Mayor asked about the funding for the pathways. What's shown in this staff report as far as gas tax funds is, is state funds that are generated from gas tax. The pathways are being paid for through Measure M, which is a county sales tax issue. So they're two entirely different pots of money and totally separate. So the pathways are, the design and the environmental work is, is underway, and it's on schedule for going out to bid in the 18, 19 fiscal year.
Connection to the smart train and the, the parallel to the tracks on that? No. Okay.
Thank you. And so with that, any discussion, I, my, my thoughts on this is, is that a lot of the work that's been done is the deepest, most difficult work. It's the sanitary sewer 17, 17 feet below grade that has to line up with gravity to function. And that work's been, a lot of that work has been inspected and it's, it's in place. Some of the storm drain has also been put in as well. And I realize that, you know, Heelsburg is a, is a 160-year-old city, right? And who knows what was going on before then? So you start digging around down there, you never know what you're going to find, but I think that we need to continue down this path of, of this project and, and see it to its completion. And although I'm not pleased with how it's going, I recognize that, you know, projects like these sometimes, you know, have, have hiccups and bumps, and, you know, we need to, we need to see this through, you know? And so that would be my only comment, is, is in support of this item and the first staff recommendation. And from a city involvement perspective, I think bringing Ree on board has been an excellent thing, and I think that you will have a, a different impact on the, on the outreach, a positive impact. And from GHD, I'd like to see a little bit higher level, a little more detail in kind of what's being, what's being done on a weekly basis. And, you know, working in projects, you kind of see a critical path and, and, you know, identifying that. And I think that bringing the businesses and, and the ones that I've spoken to, more information and, and, you know, have them buy into it more, I think will be a positive And ultimately, you know, let them be more part of it and, and buy into it and accept maybe what's going on, because, you know, we're all in this together and we've got to get it done. So those would be my only, my only comments, is I like the, I like the city being involved because I know that our, our city is staffed by competent and hardworking people. So.
So when we award contracts like this, we don't take the lowest bidder? Because this is a different scenario when we do HGHD, so they can actually charge, I mean, we don't put it out in a competitive way, or we did?
No, we typically, no, this one, we, we did, we did an RFP, Request for Proposals, and then there's a, we interviewed a number of firms a few years back, and we selected GHD. The difference between this is a professional services agreement versus a public contract. Public contract and public contracting code is separate. That's what the Bay Cities contract is under, because it's an actual construction contract. Because this is an engineering, architecture, has, falls under a different professional services agreement are, falls under different requirements. But no, we did go through this process, and we typically, well, just like we did with the tourism study, we sent an RFP out, and we received five, five or six, and we had the prices next to them, so we were able to figure out if, if we did want to move forward, which one we want to use based on price and competencies.
Manager, do, when we take the lowest bid, I, I'm just trying to weigh this out, because it's, it's one of my quests, is to look at ourselves as a charter city, and I'm going to bring that up eventually, but not tonight. But let me ask you this. I mean, at some point, don't we want to look at the way we actually award contracts? I'm just bringing it up because I do think that there's been a lot of finger pointing, and I do think that there's something really valuable to learn about knowing what you're getting when you take your lowest bid. And I understand there's legalities, but I do think that the city is served best when we can choose the best quality work and always go for the most responsible ones. And so I'd like to make sure that we do that, and I know you do, but I just have to say it on record that I think it's an issue, and as we continue to do more infrastructure, as someone pointed out, we need to work on a different wave, so we don't, it's just, it's, I just don't like spending money, especially even the gas tax money for this, because there's other things that we're going to need it for, but it, it is what it is. So I just wanted to know about the, the idea, the low bid. Thanks.
Yeah, so just to follow up, you know, we're General Law City, we follow the public contracting code, which requires us to go through the process, which we did, so we didn't have a whole lot of flexibility. I will say this, for Bay Cities, they're no more excited to be here after, you know, after the, after the August deadline as, as we are to have them here. I think everybody's really eager to get this project completed as quickly as possible. Hopefully with GHD, and working with Bay Cities and city staff, we can get that, that I meet that July 2nd deadline, which are scheduled, scheduled, if you will, that everybody's looking towards. But I know, you know, having met with Bay Cities, they're eager to get this project done. They don't want to be here, they don't enjoy Heelsburg, they don't want to be here any longer than they have to, have to be either.
Point of information, sorry, Council, I just need to know. So I know we're going to go, we're getting the vote, we're going to do the vote, but then how can I bring up in a procedural way again, to revisit, if I can ask my council members to revisit the Northern Heelsburg Avenue project? Can I do that? Because I forgot to mention that in the opening, and I don't know procedurally how I can bring it up on the agenda for next time. To talk about that money that's being spent for Northern Heelsburg Avenue.
You would just ask to have it re-agendized, and we would discuss it again. So it'd be the same procedure as putting anything else on the agenda. So if you want to wait till we get through this item and then ask?
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have two
Go ahead.
Questions with clarification. First of all, just piggybacking on that, I think we've already talked about, we're going to, we've agendized the S, the S-Stat question. So I presume that we, when we talk about the S-Stat, we could talk about how the S-Stat process would impact existing projects?
So I want to be careful. The item we're talking about right now is this, and so we can go back...
I'm just asking to clarify a decision that we've, that what we've already decided.
I think that you could probably talk to the City Manager after the meeting about that.
Are you trying to get something on the, okay.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not trying to get anything on the agenda, I just wanted to clarify...
You could talk to staff after the meeting and get what you need to know.
But the second question I have, though, is more about the, the distinction between full, doing, doing the full, GHD doing the full work or splitting it up. So the question I have, perhaps I should have asked it earlier, is what are we, I guess, the qualitative, I see that, that the quantitative pros and cons for each approach, meaning the difference in cost, but what about the qualitative pros and cons? Maybe that's, maybe Councilor Mansell, what you were kind of getting at, which is what are we, you know, what are we giving up? What are the, what are the pros and cons of, of us doing that, that outreach versus letting GHD handle the whole, the whole 100%?
So as far as the outreach goes, I, I mean, I, I'm not sure if, Ree, if I can put you on the spot, and have you touched base on kind of what you've done today and kind of what the expectation is working with GHD? But I think just the meetings that Ree has had over the past, I think, three weeks, two weeks, with the business owners and kind of a different approach, nothing to take away from the approach was taken before, but we have to have collaboration with GHD and their subcontractor, Urban Green, if this thing's going to work, because Urban Green has put so much time and effort into this, they have so much history with this project, to simply go cold turkey would not do the project justice, but I'll allow Ree to...
So just for a little more information, so what I've been doing for the past two weeks is to go to the internal meetings with our Public Works Department and GHD and Bay Cities to get a better understanding of what's going on, and then providing that information to local merchants. I do this both in a weekly email update I've just started doing, and also in face-to-face meetings with merchants. I think it would be very helpful for me to collaborate with Urban Green. I'm coming into this very new, they have all the wisdom and all the experience, and so I can tap into that. And there's, you know, it's two or three people, and I'm one person. So it would also be helpful for me to get that, to get more bodies to help me, basically.
And will this take more staff time from the city other than yourself to get this job done?
Not from an outreach perspective.
So you don't need any more staffing to do the job that you're going to add to?
That's correct, not for public outreach.
Okay, so in, in summary, then, I'm in favor of, of moving forward with this, with the, with the, with the proposed split where we have, we've got some, you know, we're, we're having a different focus of, of PR, we're getting more of that, that, that city-focused interactions that, that laid out in this plan. And yeah, you know...
You're welcome to read the
Oh.
...motion.
I'd be happy to do that. I, so then with that, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving a professional services agreement in an amount not to exceed $1,384.27 with GHD, Inc., for construction and engineering services for the Heelsburg Avenue improvement project, and authorizing the City Manager to execute the agreement and related amendments up to 10% of the original contract amount, and amending the fiscal year 2017, 18 budget to fund the agreement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilor McGold?
Yes.
Councilor Hegley?
Yes.
Councilor Nayokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell?
Yes.
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you. And we'll move on to item 8C, Calpers Contract Amendment.
Good evening.
Oh, hi there.
Hello.
Assistant City Manager, I apologize. Take it away.
Before you tonight, the staff recommendation is to adopt upon second reading, no, don't worry about it, by title only and waiving the reading of the text, Ordinance 1168, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the Council of the City of Heelsburg and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System. Way back in June, with the adoption of the MOUs, the public safety classic groups agreed to contribute an additional 1% towards the employer contribution each year for the three years of the contract. If approved, as of the effective date of the amendment to the contract, the classic public safety employees will increase their employee contribution by 1% to 10%, thereby reducing the employer portion from 19.723% to 18.723%. The timing and the steps of the contract administration process are dictated by Calpers and the government code. On October 16th, the Council adopted a resolution of intent. They also, we also introduced and held the first reading of the ordinance. The following day, we held a ballot of those affected classic employees, and it did pass with flying colors. Today, we're holding the second reading with the adoption of the ordinance. If approved, the amendment will be effective on December 10th. So before you is to adopt upon second reading by title only and waiving reading of the text, Ordinance Number 1168, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City Council of the City of Heelsburg and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System. And that concludes staff's report.
Any questions from Council on this item? Councilor McGold, do you have a question?
No. I was going to...
Oh, I need to
Oh, sorry.
...to the public. Is there anybody else in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing on, I'll bring it back for action. Thank you.
Yes, I move that we adopt upon second reading by title only and waiving reading the text, Ordinance Number 1168, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City Council, the City of Heelsburg, and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System.
I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilor McGold?
Yes.
Councilor Hegley?
Yes.
Councilor Nayokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell?
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes. Thank you very much. And with that, we have no new business written communications or closed sessions.
Mayor, before we end this, City Manager, I wanted to get back to my question, which has to do with the, I would like to see on our next agenda, I want clarification about what's on our next agenda, as I think Councilman Nayokas was suggesting, we want to have clarity. And also, I wanted to really put forth this idea that we could claw back on a plan north of town when we know that we have a real expensive project going on in the heart of our town.
Might I, might I ask, just, if you could talk to staff in the next two weeks, and if
I do.
...you can't get your, your concerns addressed, then ask at the next, the next meeting.
Well, I'm just, and as a right, though, I think I have the right to ask if I have support to look at that again and see if we can either modify it or look at the process of how we might claw back on that project and maybe even get a little less money committed to that project. So Mayor, with all due respect, I don't want to talk to staff anymore, I've already talked to our signal, I talked to our engineer about it, so I don't want to be, I just want to ask my council if I can actually put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
So the question is, because the council already voted on this item, in order to get it back on the agenda, you'd have to have three affirmative votes to get this back on the agenda? If there is three affirmative votes to get this item back on the agenda, would it agenda as a?
So my concern, Mayor, is that we have, I mean, it certainly can happen, it's not like we're never going to do it, but I have real concerns about spending money to do things, and there's lots of reasons that I could bring up, but I just want to...
The question is pretty clear.
Okay.
Councilmember Nayokas, are you okay with it? Councilmember Nayokas, are you okay with it?
I, I think, the reason why I ask about the Estat question is I think that, that these, this topic will, will arise during that conversation. So I'm not, I'm not in favor of it at this moment.
Okay. Councilmember Hagley?
I'm not in favor.
Councilmember McGold?
To be clear, you're, you're saying that while we're talking about the Estat, that we would be talking also about this other plan?
I anticipate that as a result of discussing Estat and its impact on, on, on city projects, that, that the, the topic of how it interacts, how the Estat planning process would interact with, with that North Heelsburg Avenue planning process would be illuminating and help us to kind of figure out what might be a, a, a more strategic way of going forward.
So you're basically saying that you would, might be open discussing it, but not at the next meeting at some later date?
Yeah. Well, again, in, in the context of the Estat.
Can I try? I think what you're saying is the Estat.
So can I interrupt? So right now, at, I don't know, a couple of meetings ago, the council agreed, authorized the City Manager to sign an agreement. That is out there. If the council wants to reverse that decision, I think that needs to be agendized as a separate item, separate from the Estat. And so the only question that the council has the authority to consider right now is whether to put that item on the agenda. Anything else, you were straying from the agenda for this evening.
So yes or no on the agenda?
No.
Okay. Yes, yes, no. So it won't be on the agenda.
So before we end this meeting, what is the agenda for the next meeting, Mayor? I need to know. I mean, I know we don't know exactly, but are we going for the hotels?
So I believe the next meeting on the agenda, we have the HTID. I believe we have signing of the Fitch Mountain Agreement. Right now, we're looking at the CUP discussion for hotels as of December 4th. I think that's the date.
Okay, and we have classified it as CUP for sure?
That's what the direction I received from council at the, at the, I forgot which meeting it was. And the other item, which we'll be talking about, which we discussed today, is the Estat. So that's, that was added tonight.
Okay, because there's a December 1st deadline for the Estat people to file.
The, the deadline is December 8th.
Okay, so we have time, as, as Councilman Hagley said. Okay, all right. I'm just trying to save the city money. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Make it journey.